Good evening and welcome to May 11th, 2017 Planning Board Meeting. Uh, the first item of the agenda is conceptual review for design standards for a home at Clinton Grove, Historic District on map 407 lot, 70, north side of Planters Road. The applicants are Janine and Ryan Lynch?
Yes.
Alright, I like that name. Go pronounce it.
One syllable, seven letters.
I like it. This is that little wooded lot? Has the hax strip signs on it? I drive by it twice a day, so I know what it means.
Well, it's all those five acres and yeah, since that lot.
I also made copies of the tax map for you. Taking care of it.
Thank you.
I think Chip mentioned that the zone line actually goes through the lot?
Yes, it does.
How far from the road is it?
The line? Yeah, it's probably right in the middle. But the more restrictive rules. And I think they're talking about actually-
Somebody go up to podium and-
Being back far enough to-
Tell us what we're planning on doing here.
Okay. I brought pictures.
Oh boy, we like pictures. Lots of pictures.
Probably too many. Chip told me don't overdo it, but I'm not a very good listener.
I won't say what I'm thinking.
This is the house we currently live in on Go Road and we're gonna do exactly the same thing with a metal roof.
Would you state your name for the record?
Janine Lynch.
And you have to talk into the podium because our microphone's our huge live audience.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, you're looking at pictures of the house we're proposing to build. Two-story colonial with the front porch, um, vinyl siding to look like clapboard and then a metal roof. There's a garage underneath, so it's not visible from the front, it's on the side. You can see in one of the pictures. And there's a drawing in there with roughly where we're gonna have the house on the land, kind of- We're looking at between 300 and 400 feet from the street depending on when the Perk Test shows the best sight.
Now it's all wooded now, right?
Yes. There's a little bit of a roughed-in driveway, but yeah, it's all trees.
Will this house be visible from the road?
Yes, when there's no leaves on the trees.
If you look at section 30 B C 1 2, if there's no dwelling on the lot, the exterior of any proposed new building is- has to be compatible with the historic architectural character of the district including but not limited to the following components: Size and scale, relationship to existing surroundings, including such factors as building height, mass, lot coverage, type of roof, roof lining pitch, architectural style, facade and architectural details, scale and treatment of window and door openings, style and intensity of exterior lighting, the design, scale and arrangement of site features and improvements including yard, parking, driveway signage and landscaping as they affect the setting of the building and the character of the district.
Yes.
Um, at least for me, in order to make any kind of a determination, I would need to see photographs of comparable buildings.
So these are the houses currently, and I brought a few copies.
Do any of them have vinyl siding?
Yes.
Do the historic houses have vinyl siding?
Yes.
When was the vinyl siding put on?
I did not ask the homeowner. I can see it now, it's the house on the-
Directly across the street?
Yeah, it's where Hodgson and Thorndike meet, so I'm not sure if it's Hodgson or Thorndike, it's right on the line.
John or Thorndike.
Right next to the Academy.
There used to be Bell's. Now the one next to the Academy, they did not have any permits to put that vinyl siding on, they did that illegally. Flanders has wood, the next house to it, uh, which used to be Bell's, has vinyl siding on it.
Which was legally?
What are you talking about?
It was there before I got here.
If you notice further on-
The vinyl was there before you got here?
Yeah.
You're sure?
Yeah.
And you were here before or after the district was created?
We're talking about '80 or '82, which one's Bell's?
Number 415, the mixed family lives there now.
Oh, okay.
This house.
This one.
That's vinyl?
Yeah.
I know it doesn't refer to the actual house structure, but I do know that synthetic siding that closely resembles an appearance of wood shall be permitted on some-
Where does it say that?
C 1 3. Uh, residential and agricultural accessory buildings are allowed with the synthetic siding that closely resembles the appearance of wood siding shall be permitted.
On accessory buildings?
On some of the buildings, yes. I realize it's not the actual dwelling, but it is allowed on the property in other cases.
Well, either way, you need a special exception.
No, no. Pictures of other grounds?
Yes.
Yeah, they already have an application on file with me for the next zoning board meeting.
Okay, so if they get a special exception to build this, what do we have to do?
Nothing. What you have to do, you- the way the rules go is the planning board holds sway over the architectural review, and then that information is passed along to the zoning board, and the zoning board are the ones that grant the special exception.
Almost every house is currently colonial style with cape or two-story and then-
There isn't anything about that in here.
It's in there.
Colonial style?
In the-
Yes, it's a colonial. With the same pitch of the roof and the- Simple windows.
I didn't see that.
Muntin windows.
The, um-
Maybe it says it in the village district, but you guys are the ones that decide whether it's architecturally appropriate for the zone.
Village district, that's it.
They really don't have any window trim on the outside. It's part of the vinyl window. That's up until five years ago, six years ago, that's how they're all made.
Yes.
But now you can get vinyl windows that have-
More trim?
Looks like 5 quarter by 4 trim on the outside with a slope sill, so from 10 feet away, it looks like a wood window.
Right, right.
It's called cambered-style casing.
Well, in this house, the trim is really, really small around the windows too. That's the-
Yeah, you can't tell that it's painted similar to the-
Yeah, I wanna look at that, I-
That's in there.
No, I see, but the photograph doesn't allow you to look at the window detail.
I mean, it is available in the vinyl window and it's not-
What you're seeing on this, on the Pope House are triple storm windows. If you took those off-
You'd think you'd see more of the wooden face of the actual window.
Yes, the vinyl siding, the aluminum storm windows cover the, what do you call it, four-inch by whatever-
Yeah, 5 quarter by 4 trim.
Casing.
Yeah, casing. You can buy, I mean, several manufacturers that make vinyl windows like that now, you just have to order them that way. And it really makes it look a lot more colonial than what your apartment house looks like.
Also, I point out that the kind of material, the lattice work at the bottom, um, I don't believe was used until the very late 1800s.
Right, that's not-
And that's, and also that porch, were it on, um, colonial style, it would be at ground level, not at the higher level that you show it with. I think if you look at, I have to go out and check it, but almost all of the porches on the older homes, um, where they had them were ground level.
Yes.
What's wrong with that, Neil? Today, that doesn't mean building code.
The porches are exempt from the quiet requirements of C 1.
Where is that?
C 1.3. Again, the following shall be done from the requirements of sections 21 of this article.
But this is for accessory structures, not for the main house?
And it lists porch, that, it doesn't, so when it's saying it's a porch, I would have assumed with the comma, the porch on its own entity, not attached to a shed or a greenhouse.
But doesn't this refer only to accessory structures? The following shall be exempt. Residential and agriculture accessory buildings. So if you had an accessory building with a porch, you could argue that the porch was exempt.
No, it says such as garage, a barn, a shed, a greenhouse, a porch, a deck, a breezeway.
I understand, but it says appurtenant structures. After that, everything is explanatory, but it has to be an appurtenant structure, I think, and it can't be the main house.
Okay, well, okay.
Accessory buildings, so if you were to put up a barn and you wanted to put a porch on the barn, you could argue that the porch didn't have to meet the historic district requirements. Mr. Chairman, can we schedule a site walk for this?
Yes, and I wanna, uh, make sure I know what she's asking. Because until you get a special exception, you can't build.
I'm asking for a conceptual design review meeting.
For 22.9? I'm just gonna make sure we're all on the same page before we get rolling.
No, I, 30-B C 1. Which I was under the impression before I proceed to the special exception hearing, it's required that I see the planning board to be, to go on to the next step. Planning board approval to go to see the special, the zoning board.
Well, the only- The special exception from the zoning board, unless she's asking us to make a recommendation to the zoning board, which is kinda strange to begin with. She has to get a special exception from the zoning board to have a building, then we can go under Article 22.9 and review the exterior. And also 30, obviously. 22.9 gives the planning board the responsibility.
I think her logic and mine in the approach to this was that if the planning board approved the design, that there would be no problem with the special exception. Because when they go for the special exception, they're gonna say, okay, go to the planning board for a conceptual review.
Yeah, yes. I believe to get the design review meeting from the zoning board, I need a completed conceptual review.
Which, what are you reading from on that?
Following required as a part of a request for a meeting. Design review meeting.
I think, um, and this is strictly exterior, so I'm not-
And it's-
What I'm saying is really applied to interior or anything like that, I mean, but- Really, we need a list, I guess, and maybe some samples of-
The actual finishing materials?
Of what your, what your trim is gonna consist of. Like the window trim I was talking about, the roof trim, I mean, obviously you're not gonna wrap it in wood, it's gotta be a board-looking material. Maybe plastic trim or something, or wood, I mean, their choice. But I think we need some, a list of some building details to make that decision.
What if they sided with wood?
Then they're fine.
What if you, what if you sided with wood?
I mean, cement board would be fine.
No, not in the-
Same material, it just needs to look like it.
So, you would-
Right?
Yeah.
I know. Well, metal roof is, I mean, it originates way before asphalt shingles do historically wise, but I do understand that.
Asphalt shingles are supposed to imitate wooden shakes.
Yeah, wooden shakes, or slate, yeah. Yes, they don't anymore very much, but yeah.
That's an understatement.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well-
Has she applied to the zoning board?
Yeah.
And the zoning board meeting is what?
June 6th. Is our June 6th-
First week in June.
Mr. Chairman, what is the role of the planning board as distinct from the ZBA?
That's what I'm trying to figure out right now. Why are we hearing this?
Can I ask, Mr. Kirk asked at the beginning if the house was visible from the street. So, if the house isn't, I mean, I'm assuming it is because when I stand way back in the woods 400 feet from Planters Memorial, I can just barely make out the house across the street, which is within 25 feet of the pavement.
I can see it, it's white.
Yeah, I can see it's white. If the house was moved, if the house is moved back and no longer visible from the street, would that-
Yeah, but the, that's a tough, um-
That's a tough call because you're gonna be clearing the driveway, obviously, so there's not gonna be any trees. You're gonna be able to see down the driveway the house.
Right, the driveway's gonna go beside the house and then the house will be, the driveway's gonna turn into the house.
You're gonna see the house.
The other part of that tough call is, oh, how do you see the house, why do you see it down here? There's no assurance that we could, it can never be seen from the street.
Right.
I mean, there's no reason why you couldn't-
Right. I realize that, you're right.
Cut trees down, or some future owner cut trees down.
It is interesting though how it does state that in here, isn't it?
See, I was wondering about the materials.
I mean, if it was a landscape, if it was a hill in the way, so you couldn't see it from the street, that's a different story.
You can move hills too.
Yeah.
Only takes an excavator to move a hill.
Don't need to move it, just make it.
Yeah.
I could do that.
Stand up before I talk and state my name and everything?
Please.
You have to come over here.
My name is Ryan Lynch, and I'm the other name that's on the conceptual application. So, what I was considering is, is that, uh, the materials that the house is built from, if they look like, you know, match the structures or matches the features, looks like it, you know, why would, why would it be an issue like if we were to go with a, I think I heard you say that if it was to be that polyvinyl one, that looks like one to do the fascia with? Cause I don't think metal wrapping, I don't really like-
No, I mean, that's fine. I mean, because you can get the same, really, well, look, the architectural, you know, the proportions, you know, and, um, you can do, you can do it in that PVC. So it looks identical to it. And it's-
But then there's a problem with the corner boards.
No, you can make the corner boards look the same too.
For some reason, I've never seen a vinyl house that had corner boards that looked anything like-
Well, that's why I said, we need, the pictures don't, the pictures don't do justice.
If they use AZAC, they look just like it.
Exactly.
But that's not vinyl.
Yeah, it is, solid plastic, PVC.
Yeah, but it's not, but when they, when you do, on this, on this house, my guess is that this is a-
It's a hollow-
A hollow, right, and-
Right, it's a solid door, it's not a hollow door.
That would be different.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I said if you had some samples, a little better description than just the picture.
We weren't, yeah, we weren't, these are the pictures of the neighboring houses. I brought a couple copies of those. And then a picture of, of our proposed house, not so close to it, it's more how you'll actually see it, a little bit further away, um-
And the second part of what I was wondering is if, uh, if the so-called vinyl siding, you know, that looks like the other materials that are used, like if it resembles a four-inch clapboard siding, which was common back then, if, uh, if it's mentioned on the, what did you call it, article?
What?
Vinyl siding in these areas, even though there may be accessory buildings. It seems like they're saying that they wouldn't mind as long as it seems to follow that trend. I'm not saying that you can necessarily disregard which building it's gonna be on, whether it's the primary one or an accessory building. But it seems like if they're saying that vinyl siding is acceptable material to use in these areas, you know, why would you wanna exactly decipher between a satellite versus a primary building?
I didn't help write that article, but I think the perception of vinyl siding, if it's done inexpensively, they use a lot of what they call J-channel, and it looks hideous. But there's ways of doing the vinyl siding and things that you can use to eliminate that J-channel. And when you do that, then it looks a lot more like wood because you don't see the J-channel trim around the outside border of it. It's into the window trim, it's just, it's a lot cleaner looking, which I think is really the intent. Have it clean looking like an old, 200-year-old house. And it can be done, but that's why we need some more detail because this-
Do you, I mean, this doesn't look like a 200-year-old house. You've got a skinny chimney, which never would have been on the outside, never would have been that thin.
Right.
If you, if all the houses had usually central chimneys or an interior chimney for overriding reasons. And most of them were multiple flues, so that the chimney as a reference to the roof was substantially larger than-
Right.
This is a single flue, I would take it.
It talks about chimneys not needing a special exception at all, did it?
Where's that?
C 2 D. The following exterior alterations shall be permitted for any building-
Alterations.
Okay, repair, replacement or installation of a chimney?
But that's on an existing structure.
How would you-
You're not doing an alteration, you're building a new one.
Okay, so, so you're, okay, you're not doing an install, you're not doing an installation, you're building a new one?
You're not doing an alteration, you're doing a new one.
No, but it said installation, I would assume-
Installation.
I would assume an installation.
So if the house already existed-
Then this would apply.
Then you could put a chimney on without needing a special exception. That's how I was reading it.
And there's ways to make-
I did realize that.
A fake chimney in the middle roof to make it look like, without it being cost prohibitive. Even if you don't need a chimney.
Right.
To give it the look.
Right.
Which is what the only thing we have the purview for. I mean, what the chimney's connected to on the inside of the house, we don't care.
If anything.
Right.
And they make a vinyl siding that comes in both clapboard and shake style, that from 20 feet away, you cannot tell it's vinyl.
Right, well-
Cannot tell.
I can, right.
But it's expensive.
And if you did it on the front of the house, you don't necessarily have to do the hall, it's part visible from the street?
At 400 feet away, you're barely gonna tell the house color versus what's on the side of it.
Yeah, it's true, but as you drive by, you can, you can spot a modern house, which this one is, versus one of these others, because this is nice and uniform, whereas a lot of the other houses that you folks have pictures of, who were perhaps built at different periods, for example. This house, one has to expect that dormer roof was added on later.
Yeah, that one was built in the 40s.
Yeah, the porch was an add-on. I mean, it's not as clean and nice and neat as yours was.
So you're saying they should pour a foundation that's not level and start that way?
Yeah, hire a crooked builder.
Everything crooked and lots of-
Well, no, no, not so much.
There's no chimney visible on 415.
I don't see.
That one has a chimney, yeah, that one has a chimney. And that one has a bigger, bigger chimney. But the house next to us was built in the 40s. They have a chimney, I can't see if it's small or large.
Mr. Chairman, is this really, is this really something for this board, or do these folks need to go directly to and only to the ZBA?
They need to go to us-
For what?
According to 20, chapter, or page 28, Article 22.9.
I don't think I took that one.
22.9.
Bottom of the page.
Is the Clinton Grove Historic District a designated village district?
22.9.
Yes, 22, 6.4.1 Clinton Grove.
Yes, I have this one. Is the responsibility the property owner in a respective to demonstrate to the planning board using architectural drawings, etc., how this will be accomplished?
That's a native village district, yes it is.
22.9. Yes, yeah, designated village district.
So I think they need to get a special exception from the zoning board.
Yes. It's the responsibility, the honor and the respective to demonstrate the planning board using architectural drawings. Yep, I am.
Yeah, it's a lot of record. As soon as you guys rubber stamp this, they can build it.
With a special exception?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should be no problem.
Mr. Chairman-
Cause they don't even have to review the design.
That's the way I look at it. The zoning board does not have to look at the design.
No, all they have to do is bless, they bless it and send it back to you.
Right.
How do you feel, figure that? It says here on, on C 1, um, 30, this is Article 51. 30 B C 1. No new building shall be erected within the Clinton Grove Historic Overlay District unless by special exception. In reviewing an application for expect, for a special exception, the ZBA shall take into account-
So, if the ZBA says they like this-
Right.
It's a done deal. They build it. They don't have to come back to you.
They certainly do.
According to this, they have to come back to you. Yeah, well, that's what I'm, I'm agreeing with you. Neil is saying they don't have to come back. That once they get the ZBA, they can build their house.
No, that's not what you're saying.
Yeah, you did.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, you did.
No, we didn't. This zoning board, they gotta get a special exception. Everywhere they say 30 B C 1 dot, 1 dot 1, 1 dot 2 and say board, they aren't talking about us, they're talking about the ZBA.
Correct.
So the zoning board has to find the dwelling unit, the exterior is conform, the zoning board has to do all those things.
But there's either a conflict or a duplication, I think, because 22.9 says-
The planning board.
That he talks about the planning board's compatible architectural styles within the designated village districts, which includes Clinton Grove.
Correct. Yes, it does.
So does that mean these folks are subject to two separate boards looking at the architectural?
Yes, they are.
Yes.
And that's why they're here for the first one.
Who wrote the zoning ordinance?
Us. Sort of.
This is a colonial zoning ordinance. One part was written at one time, the other part was added on to at another time, and they don't quite, the door structures don't quite match between the two dwellings.
And two of the houses were built in the 40s, 1940s, so they're not even colonial era.
Oh, the Historic Overlay District was added, do you?
No.
Oh, boy, it did say, didn't it? I don't remember.
It should be dated. We paid someone a lot of money to date these things.
We removed, this was-
There's amendments in LA stuck in here and there.
It showed every village district. It lit-
If only the amendments are dated, then the original article came with the original zoning in 1988.
I haven't seen any dates prior to LA.
Then it's 88, when the zoning ordinance was passed.
Anywhere.
Then the zoning ordinance was-
They said there's no, no. We started to put any dates on in LA.
Yeah, but I paid somebody to go back and date every one of these articles as to the, as to the date that it was modified, and if it wasn't modified at all, the article stands from 1988.
Created over the decades. It looks as though you have to satisfy two separate boards applying different standards to the same building. In the Clinton Grove section that your wife is addressing, there are all sorts of requirements which we were discussing, and assuming that you develop a proposal that meets with the ZBA's approval, you then come back here under Article 22.9.
Yeah.
The exterior of all structures within Clinton Grove shall be architecturally compatible with the historic building details in those districts. It's the responsibility of the property owner to demonstrate to the board using architectural drawings, photos, etc., how this will be accomplished. Sides of structures not directly visible from public roads will be allowed some leniency of detail to be determined by the planning board on a case-by-case fact basis.
It doesn't really state which board we have to see first, though, does it?
You're correct, it does not.
Okay, but it does, I see the 22.9 you're referring to with the planning board stated, absolutely, and the 30-B with the zoning board.
So let's assume that you present this, and we think, oh yeah, this is architecturally compatible. And then you trot over to the ZBA and they say, that may be the case under 22.9.
We're prepared, we're prepared to see both and to hear what everybody has to say, and we definitely turned in our application for there too. We understood we had to see both the boards.
So, here's, here's the problem. Right now, you have a general discussion with us, which is not binding on anyone. And you come away with some concept, or you say the hell with it. And then you go over and take this to the ZBA and they love it.
Right.
Then you come back to the planning board for the formal approval, and we say, no way. Then what do you do?
Right. Then we talk to you about what you will need to say yes.
And then we say A, B, and C, and you do that.
Right.
Now you're in violation or not compatible with your special exception.
So you go back to the zoning board.
You're better off working out with us first.
Well, Neil, actually-
Then if you go to the ZBA with what we've recommended, and if the ZBA want to change things, then they can make changes and come back and we can make change rather than change the special exception.
Sounds like the two boards should have one meeting.
Not for us, no.
No, but he's got a very good point.
That is a possibility.
Bring a bucket of water with you when you come.
Anything we do has to be-
It's too late at night for coffee, right?
We can't ignore 30. B 1 2 6, whatever the one, and we can't ignore the rest of the zoning orders.
No. No.
So whenever they get the special section, I would assume the zoning board would certainly have them follow in all those.
And Mr. Kirk, I do agree with that. Lattice, either not having it, but I also.
I don't see how it's gonna be an issue going back and forth.
Just paying fifty dollars every time we have to go see the zoning board.
Once you get a special section, have a, something exterior of the zoning board approved.
It's cheaper than coming here.
I think.
When you get the bill for this, when you come for the formal one of these.
Oh. That, I think, I think I might have seen that one in here.
You need to fold these costs into your bank loan.
Yeah, yes, or talk to them.
Yeah, but it doesn't make the house worth anymore, and so it's hard to get your present and fold it in.
It means that they perhaps have to put up a little bit more cash.
I mean, the length, the length of the front yard's gonna matter to me, because you start cutting down, you have a two-hundred-foot wide, long front yard, all of a sudden you only got two-hundred feet of wood blocking you from the road, rather than four-hundred feet. Little things like that are gonna matter.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not clearing very many trees at all.
No, but we have to go on the assumption that your successors.
Okay, what about if you build a house, something happens, and two years later you sell it, and there's nothing anywhere saying that the next owner can't cut down all the trees?
Right, right.
So there's things like that we have to consider as well.
That's why I said if there was a hill in the way, it's a different story than.
It is, certainly is.
Which comes.
It'd be really weird looking to have a hill there, too, by the way.
Guys, realistically, there's nothing in either section that talks about changing standards if the visibility from the road changes. That's something that you were suggesting is a good idea, and I agree, it's very commonsensical, but there's nothing in here that talks about that.
It says something about leeway for distance.
Are you scheduled to have a meeting with the ZBA?
Yes.
Yes, on the sixth.
June sixth.
When do we next meet, on the twenty?
May twenty-fifth.
We could certainly take a quick peek down there. And on the twenty-fifth, come back and suggest A, B, C, D, and E.
Well, I, I think for us to give an approval, at least personally, I'd like to see architectural drawings of at least a front and a left-side elevation.
And they still need to file a formal application to do that.
I think the zoning board would want that.
Well, yeah.
If you see any, if you're gonna see any of this house, it's gonna be the front and the left side.
The driveway end, where the garage is, on the front, right.
Is, is this house perpendicular, parallel, angular to the road?
The front of the house is parallel to the road.
So.
And you say it's gonna be.
I don't see how you'd be able to see the ends at all.
The driveway is wide, when you're looking down the driveway.
Well, the house, right, the house will be.
But the driveway is, is like straight in.
What if you, if you made a circum time driveway?
Well, it's not narrow.
The fire department might not be happy.
We didn't wanna make it complicated for the fire department.
We, yeah, we, we talked to the fire chief, and he said, it's a straight driveway for the fire.
Yeah, it's like two-hundred feet wide, so they're not a lot.
Do you think you can stake it out roughly in the next week or so?
Stake out?
The house location?
Yep, we were there.
I thought you were there.
Like, we were, yeah.
I saw you driving home.
Pete Gamash from TNT Excavations has been there, he was shooting some lines, just like proposing different things, and there, there is top, this is the, this was the, I don't, when you had talked about an architectural drawing, the front and the sides, this is the, um, there is some topographic, I, I know it's lower, where the house is proposed, than street level, I don't know if it's still enough, as far as. Walking.
I guess there's a, from the road, you probably see the top rail on the front porch.
So from the way the grain. Let's assume we go there and we come, and we, we see certain things, let's assume these folks come back with architectural drawings, whatever you're looking for, and we meet on the twenty-fifth, what couldn't we do then?
You only have time to have a conceptual. There would be no time for proper notification of a butters.
I don't see how this has, says anything about notification to anybody.
So can they delay their appearance at the ZBA?
The property owner, property owner has to come to us to demonstrate to the board. I don't think that's a public hearing. The zoning board is certainly gonna be a public hearing.
So after they go to the zoning board, they can come back here, and you guys, if you wanna see what it looks like prior to the zoning board, could do a walkabout on a specified day, but I don't think they have to come back here for any more conceptuals until they get their special exception and come back with a.
They can even come back before the.
Architectural plan.
I mean, we could do a walk, look at the conceptials, ask them, have a better idea what the lay of the land is.
On the twenty-fifth?
Between now and the twenty-fifth, and then come back the twenty-fifth.
Are, are you suggesting there's no notification to a butters?
For, for this planning board portion, no, I don't believe there is.
Just for the ZBA? Really?
I don't see, what are they planning for? They're not planning for a subdivision.
Is this for your, your new house, or is this for?
They're not planning for a subdivision or a site plan or anything else.
You're having a block basement?
You know, it does say, sides of structures not directly, not directly visible in public road will be allowed some leniency. Certainly the side is not directly visible. But I mean, this, this, this elevation doesn't have any corner boards shown on it, the roof trim is.
That's not a suitable architectural drawing, is what you're saying, right?
That front elevation doesn't have any corner boards either, and the window trim is.
Okay, there's not, not any no detail?
No.
Neil, did you say that building codes currently prevent anybody from having a porch or a deck at a different level than the floor?
The problem is, Neil, you can't have any wood, less than twelve inches from the ground.
Actually, it's eighteen.
So.
Even pressure treated?
You can't build, you can't build a porch six inches off the ground.
Because they're raw. And you can't, and you have to have a minimum of twelve inches of concrete from the sill to the ground exposed.
Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, rot.
Rotten backsplash.
So I can't?
You, you can't fill right up to your clawboards with flour satin, no, twelve inches.
Yeah, my recommendation's eighteen because of my experiences with rot.
No, I know, the, the code is twelve, but eighteen's a better number.
Right.
But, yeah, even at twelve, you wanna do, you know, a stone splash two feet away from the house, so you don't get the.
Right, right. I found out concrete surfaces underwater cascading everywhere, but crushed stone makes it so that it barely splashes.
Right. So that becomes problematical trying to build a truly historic house, you know, historic looking house, technically accurate, because every, they were all sitting on the ground, porches are on the ground, but they were, that's why all the sills, all the beam sills are rotted out, the porches, that's not gonna have to work on them so much, because.
Yeah, they had wood sills.
Yeah.
And you build a house now, you gotta have semi-permeable membranes, vinyl siding's made the leak. Water, water, water flows behind vinyl siding, it's like, there's drain holes, and, and I don't know if you ever installed it, but.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's why the tieback seems to be the real, the real problem solver, in a sense, because I notice that with the vinyl sign, and driven rain, wind-driven rain, I think can get in behind it.
And if you leave the tieback exposed to the UV rays for more than a year, it's useless.
So, I don't know, we've discussed this a little bit, my wife and I, but we haven't come to any final conclusions, all right? My family consists of my dad and my brother that are both Masons, and me and Mason tend it. And the thing is, one of the ideas we considered was doing a, a brick outside.
None of the houses are brick, though, that's why.
None of the houses in that area are brick, but it was timed, but in what to say, conceptual.
Yeah, but they wanted to conform with the, with the other dwell, neighboring dwellings.
Right.
But it says, compatible with the historical architectural character.
Of the build, of the.
Of the district.
Yep, so it's with the neighboring, so the brick doesn't.
But if you, if you did brick, not in the modern way, where you have the, you know, a half-inch gap between the two bricks that you fill with mortar, but you do the bricks, so it's like three-sixteenths of an inch, and, you know, you can look at the old brick buildings, or brick, certainly the brick chimneys, I would think that you could use any combination of older materials, as long as it was architecturally consistent. You, you probably couldn't use a block building, concrete, because that just wasn't compatible with it. I don't see why you couldn't do a brick building on it.
That was my thought with the metal roofing, too, with like the Historical Society having a metal roof and everything, thinking it was, you know, it may not be conducive to Clinton Grove, but it is very, you know, it's accurate historically.
But yours isn't copper.
No, it would be.
Twenty ounce copper.
It would be to look similar with the standing, right, right, it wouldn't be the exact same material. The historic building, the copper.
The stone building, which was built in eighteen ninety-six, later than this district, generally speaking, does have a copper, I, I don't know if it seemed, I know, I think it's, I think it's soldered.
I have a picture of it.
It's a standing ceiling, and, and so that's an original, a replacement for an original roof.
You can, it's hard to see, but you can see the.
Yeah, standing ceiling.
But it is, yes, copper.
And this.
That's the acad, the academy.
Right, this is a copper roof, and I think that is soldered, 'cause it's a funny shape, and this, I know, is asphalt.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know whether that roof, this was an existing building, I don't know whether that roof was put on before or after the Clinton Grove zoning ordinance came in, I think it was after, because it's relatively.
Well after.
Do I know what year the zoning ordinance came on? I didn't, I didn't find that.
I, I don't know.
She had come across it somewhere, as my guess was sixty-nine, but I'm not really sure.
No, I don't remember.
That was one of the last houses that was built then?
No, they were built in, there was two houses built in nineteen forties.
Flanders was an old house, they have a new addition on it that was made to look like the old house.
The yellow cape was built in nineteen forty, and the greenhouse right next to us was built in.
If you were to take one of that, you want a two-story colonial style house, find one in the neighborhood.
Sylvia Pope is right next to it.
There you go, take Sylvia Pope, look at the details, the materials and the detail, the scale, the size, and all that stuff, to the extent you can not duplicate it, but are, are doing it substantially similar to that.
Right.
I would think that that would meet the standards for the ZBA and probably for us.
She seems to have an addition to her house, but the main house would be very similar with the two windows on either side of the front door, the five windows across.
Which is, which is what you have, but see, these windows are eight over eight, and her windows are somewhat narrower, and that changes the proportions of the facade, I mean, that's one of the giveaways, this is new, rather than.
Yes, but there's egress codes for firefighters to get on the windows now.
Big, big problem with the windows.
We have to have large windows.
Can't use those little windows.
You can't have a, a.
If it's in a bedroom, you can't use it.
The egress fire code, actually, our front windows are actually too small for egress fire code, and so we actually, those are egress fire code windows, and you'll see they're much larger, so we're limited with that, too, we can't really build a colonial house anymore, we can get as close as we can try, you know, it's kinda.
And without the bump out in the front, the stairs won't fit.
Which is, which takes precedence, the zoning ordinance?
No.
No.
Oh, no, I have to.
If you want to build a house, there doesn't be building codes, period.
And the egress windows are in the fire codes, can't do it.
I would not like to be at risk, fire.
They're gonna do it, Neil. You take these small windows, you make them casements.
And they make them operable without the use of a tool, and therefore they comply, but they're casement windows, not double hongs.
I don't think there's any casement windows in the neighborhood, though, not that I remember, I remember them all.
They look like a double hung.
All, all double hung, yeah.
High observations.
Yes. And some of them have more muntens than others, this one is actually.
The red house has orioles on the bottom.
And there is vinyl siding directly across the street.
One of the other things that you might want to ask yourself is, from a colonial point of view, is this overhang is much, much, I don't think there is an overhang on the Pope house.
The Flanders house, I know it's, it's a com, yes, you're right, we're pulling architectural elements from, well, I don't know that we need to copy one house if we're trying to blend with the whole neighborhood.
But the problem is when you do the blending.
Yeah.
What results is, is something that's not consistent at all with anything in the district.
Well, none of, okay.
If you blend like that, whereas if you were to take.
No, you get old hangs here, you have a what, old hangs here.
Yes, the neighbors.
Yeah, but, no, no, I understand that, but that's a different style house, if she's saying, we're doing the Pope house, and she's trying.
She's not saying she's doing the Pope house.
No.
But, but that's why this isn't anything, it's a combination of.
Which is in harmony.
It doesn't have to be, look like one of the existing houses.
Right, it's just in harmony.
Right. I guess, I guess harmony is in the eyes of the holder.
Do you wanna do a walkabout?
That's why there's not one person on the board, right, so you get harmony.
I don't know what we're approving it.
Well, right at the moment, you're not approving anything, 'cause it's a conceptual. You're just bouncing ideas off each other as to what you might accept, and it appears that they're not accepting this, this drawing.
But we need to, we need to act in a ways that gives these folks guidance, so that they're not coming back and presenting something to the ZBA and get approval for that, and come back to us, and our hackles are raised and we say no. The idea of having a common meeting, to me, has some merit.
You were, it had been mentioned that there was an interest in us staking out where the house was actually gonna be located, and walking to see what it looked like, would that be driveway as well, or just the?
Oh, driveway's straight, pretty much.
Yes.
Yeah, not to worry about that.
So just more the, standing from the road and visualizing how you see the house with the actual natural hills of the landscape? Because the road does sit a little bit lower than the actual property in certain places.
Well, and why do the window requirements, I can't imagine you could duplicate any house that you build that's gonna be representative of what's there now, if they're all narrow windowed houses, right?
No, not all of them, Sylvia Pope says.
Yeah, but what you said, Chuck, you said that you got the one window in the bedroom on the side, on the gate one?
Yeah.
You only need one window in the bedroom, you'd speak egress, so the five across the front, as long as you can get a window on the, one of the ends.
Oh, as long as this is an egress window, that's gonna have to be.
Right.
Oh, so their five front windows could be nine over six.
Right.
As long as this window here and this window.
And the windows on the first floor with no bedrooms.
Right, and first floor is, if it's not a bedroom, window size doesn't matter.
There's one bedroom on the first floor.
Yeah, so that, that one bedroom will need one egress window.
Is it on the back?
I would assume it's on the front.
It's on the front.
Really?
Is it on the corner, so you can get, end of the window?
Yes, it's above the garage. Yes, it's above the garage.
Okay.
So this-
Yes, that's a bedroom.
This window could be an egress window.
Yeah.
And then these windows could be narrow.
Yeah.
Yes, they could.
Or a casement that looks like all the rest.
Right.
With the casement.
Harvey sells them.
Well, and narrow window with shutters would probably enhance the, uh-
Some of the houses have shutters, some don't. Sylvia Pope's doesn't, the Flanders does on one part, not the other. I mean, it's really a match, it's-
But that's, that's the reason why pick and choose gives you something that is totally inconsistent with the architectural appearance.
Yes, but like the Flanders house, for example, has shutters on one part of the house, but not on the other, you know, so they, not, not necessarily are the houses themselves completely consistent with themselves, like some of them have, you know, so it's definitely-
Because they, some of them have different materials?
Done at different times, yeah, yeah. Like the porch is on the back, and, and it's, we felt that our-
You're not putting on an L.
This is why that line's been for sale for so goddamn long.
There's no L on the back.
This is why that line's been for sale for so long.
Correct, there's a, I think there's another picture, and it shows the back is straight.
This whole, that, right, this whole thing here.
We, we thought, you know, a nice, simple, basic colonial, nothing crazy, wild, different would just, you know, kinda, blend in simply.
Also, this is what we're gonna do. End. I don't know about the slogan.
They're not building a designated village district.
Right.
Compare that to-
They're what?
Most of them, I, I mean, I didn't get up on the roofs, but they look-
Well, if they're far enough back in the lot, they're in the RA zone.
From my point of view, it would be much easier to make a decision.
Because the more restrictive applies.
Were, and after to-
What's the more restrictive? What's the other thing to be?
Were a product of a particular period, not a copy of one element from seventeen ninety, another element from nineteen forty, and two elements from eighteen, from seventeen sixty and seventeen seventy.
Neil, if I may, I'm gonna probably get you all upset, but, um,
Sure.
This lot is two hundred feet wide and very long.
Yes.
And it appears that the village district is a couple hundred feet from the road.
Okay, just within a few hundred feet of the road?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know the number.
Yes, I, I don't either.
If you're, if the number's three hundred and fifty, and the front of your house is three hundred and fifty-one feet from the road, your house is not in the designated village district.
That's correct.
What does it matter what she builds? Why is she here?
It is, but is she?
I guess I'd have to get the exact, it's on the-
Ready to reply?
There's no, there's no two rigs, there's one rig. He's in the RA zone.
Where does it- If you're out of the zone, if, if it's an overlay district, it's, it's different, you didn't bolt it.
If she's gonna build in front of the lot.
But it's not overlay district, it's a village district, and she's not in it, she's not in it.
What is the, where is the dimension of the district?
I do not have that, but this little zoning map shows it about a third of the way back to the lot.
It's on the map, isn't it?
Well, I, no-
No, no, but there's gotta be some description in the statute that says-
Our tax map is, uh, our property's split on two tax maps, that's the line you're thinking of, that's not the historic district or the RA.
Yeah, Wendy's, Wendy's making full-size zoning maps.
On the colored map that the chairman has, is definitely, there's a line.
If they can locate that house back in the RA zone, if you guys don't care, I'll let them build it. They don't need a special exception, they don't need anything.
Grove Village District in its entirety, except block four oh four one sixty-seven, which I assume is not yours.
Correct.
So what is the Clinton Grove Village District?
It's a nice red drawing on one of the maps.
No, but let's see if we can define it, here.
Yes. I don't see a definition of how deep it is, anywhere.
The overlays are sketchy at best.
If this map is all we have to go by, which I think it is, or a newer one, this is all-
Where are the village districts? What was, article, was that twenty-two something?
Twenty-two, yes.
It just-
I'm trying to get eleven by seventeens of that made for you.
That's just frontage only, the address is frontage only, that's the only thing. I don't have the beginning of it.
So if your, if your lot's roughly a thousand feet deep, I would say the, the village district is roughly three hundred feet deep.
Correct.
It looks like it's about a third of the lot.
Chip, do we have an official definition measured in feet, or whatever, with respect to the village district?
No, you guys never did that. And the zoning maps, I have more lots in town that are split down the middle. You're dealing with the same thing over on the corner of Route seventy-seven.
That doesn't matter, we're talking about this one right now.
And Rockland Road.
We're talking about the, we're talking about the Clinton Grove.
And, and the zones are split.
And that's okay.
Do we have a, a really good map to, in a large scale, where we could see where the zoning district comes in this particular lot?
You've, you've got that map.
But that's a reduced size.
Yeah.
Wendy has a big one.
We've got it full-size in the office.
On the wall, yeah, in the office.
Yeah, huge one.
And is that the official definition of the village district?
Yes. That is the official map.
And do you know how somebody who made that map decided to put the line here rather than here?
Those lines were put down long before I ever got here.
So how they got to be there is lost in the mists of time?
Yep. So the only thing I can do on the map that Wendy has on the wall, is I can scale back from the road and determine the rural ag zone on their property.
And the village district.
Best guess, yes, and the village district, and if they go past the end of the village district, then, and they're in the RA. And they can have a nice day, and they've wasted their evening of coming here to talk to us.
Oh, I love visiting people.
It would make your guys' job easier, wouldn't it?
It would make our job easier, but it also would establish a certain measure of clarity that I'm surprised I, or someone else, didn't ask at the beginning.
One of Chip's duties is the official arbitrator of the zoning.
Yeah, yeah, there's the line, right there.
So you have not done that with respect to this lot?
No.
Could you do that?
I could do that. I could probably do that tomorrow. I could name that tune in three notes.
So if in fact, they're proposing to put, if, if you can tell them exactly where the line is, the line is four hundred feet-
And I can guarantee you, they'll be out of the zone.
I think it's gonna be about three fifty.
Is, is your lot deep enough so that, it's a thousand feet deep?
Thousand on one side, eleven hundred on the other, it's at an angle in the rear.
Okay, so say it's a thousand feet, is practical matter. If they're back eight, I'm making this up, if they're back eight hundred feet, they've gotta be out of the zone.
Yeah.
If there's, right.
And they could put their septic system and everything else out under the ground in the zone, because we don't require historical septic systems.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting you do. I'm suggesting that if, wherever the line is, you have the choice.
In the L, right.
Double hole or in the back of the L.
Beyond the line by one foot, then you don't have to come before us or the ZBA.
Oh, is it? Okay.
If you're putting it inside by one foot.
Then you have to go-
Then you have to.
At least one footer.
And we don't, Chip will tell you where the line is, but we don't know, and I was using the eight hundred feet as a hypothetical line.
It would just be the front board trim, right, on the porch, if it gets approved.
Yeah, if the porch extends into the house, isn't, you're in trouble.
So tomorrow, we will make the determination of exactly where that line is, and if it be the case, I'll withdraw your application for the zoning board and give you back your money.
Okay.
Now, is, is it obvious from the map that part of the property is in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're different colors.
Definitely.
Yes.
And looking at it roughly, is it half and half?
About a third in.
A third in. So they're golden.
Right.
Could be.
Should be.
We'll measure it.
Why didn't you tell us this an hour ago?
I said something before we ever got here to Chip about this, two weeks ago. And he comes up with this more restrictive zone applies. Well, it's not two zones, it's one or the other, there's not a more restrictive.
Well, there is more restrictive between the Clinton Grove and the RA.
But there's not, it's not an overlay district.
You're, you, no, this is, the village district, the Clinton Grove district is an overlay district over the village.
Yes.
The village district is separate from, and not an overlay.
From the RA, you're, you're in the village, you're in the RA, you're not in both.
And so a decision needed to be made, because if I said, have a nice day, build your house, and
Neighbors started saying what's going on.
Four or five people, residents of the community, decided that I was wrong, and came in and beleaguered the selectmen.
So again, you had them come in here to cover your.
Yes.
If it turns out, if you're outside of the zone, put up a four by eight sign by the road saying, we're not in the district.
Lam, laminate this, says does not apply.
As long as it's only two by three, because in the zone-
No sign, no rules, there's no lights, right? Not, no shining lights.
Sign, yeah, signs, signs are a problem.
Well, the building permit has to be posted anyway, which says, the town's approved, yeah, yeah. Then they have to come down the driveway.
And you could also put a historical marker on it that said, this house was made in two thousand seventeen.
No historical marker necessary, right?
You want your photographs?
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
You may want them. Save you some, save you some color.
Maybe not.
Well, you might want them back.
I will, I will check this for you tomorrow.
If you decide to build two feet inside, we'll see.
Matter of fact, if you would like coming in the morning.
I, I would love to.
Because I'm, I'm gonna have a crazy day in, uh, we'll measure, I'll measure it tomorrow morning.
Eight oh five, we like your coffee black.
You do know tomorrow's Friday?
We got it. What?
Wendy likes hot chocolate.
You do know tomorrow's Friday, right?
Yes, I do know tomorrow's Friday.
It's four o'clock on Friday that you're, it's-
Don't come in in the fourth hour Friday, then, why is that?
It's just too late to start a project, project.
I gave them the lecture of the construction industry. Don't come and see me at eight o'clock on Monday morning.
We only did it once.
Please understand, this has nothing to do with the construction industry.
And don't come and see me at, at four o'clock on Friday afternoon, because the world has already come unglued.
If, if you, if you really wanna get a good answer from him, offer him some liquid refreshment on his yacht.
On his yacht?
Which I believe is somewhere on the New Hampshire Seacoast.
No, it's in the backyard.
It's in the backyard. So he might see it.
When you bring, when you bring the couch up, we'll go up on the yacht and have a cocktail.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad I could come and open up the table of the Clinton Grove line of where it is and where it isn't.
Me too.
Me too.
Now, when I drive by when somebody's building a house, I'm like, I'll say, somebody's in the district, no problem.
I think I like your idea. I'm sorry I don't know your name, but I like your idea of making a wider trim on the window.
Oh, yeah.
Anyways.
You can buy them like a, you just have to order them with that trim.
It's with the window, it'll be free.
Yeah, it's all comes pre-attached to the window, you don't have to put it on.
I also like the idea that you were talking about the vinyl trim, because mine is, is a wrap, and the metal expands and contracts. It looks a little buckly.
If you have, if you have the talent available at minimal or low cost, maybe a case of beer, to have a brick house, wow.
I know, great.
I don't think it'll be a can of beer, I think it'll be materials only. The labor's probably free, but we'll see.
My dad's really excited.
And it'll look old with enough beer.
So he was saying to me, he's like, Ryan, yeah, why don't you build a block house and do a brick veneer on it? He's like, you know what? It'll never rot, termites won't eat that. I was like, yeah, Dan, but he says, I think that's gonna cost a lot.
My father told me that's what I should do in nineteen sixty-five.
At the very least, you could, you could have your foundation brick, the, the facade of it.
Oh, yeah, that would be pretty, that would cover up.
If, if you didn't wanna go the whole route. And I, I've seen some houses, which are, the bottom floor is brick, older houses, and the top was wood.
Yeah.
Probably because it was a cake to start with.
Oh, yeah.
And they decided to raise it, and they went to wood rather than-
They did those on garrisons a lot, they did a material underneath the actual garrison overhang, a different material.
And the other thing you can do, and this was very common in, in older houses, the ends are brick.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the front and the back are clambered, and then your chimney is built inside the house.
But on the ends.
But on the ends.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And that's really attractive.
They're all pretty thin.
It's a horror show, though, with the two inch clearance you gotta have today.
If you guys have Freemason labor, I'm, why are you, this is the final.
I know.
Gotta make the house bigger.
Brick's not free.
And put a wood stove in?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, outside chimneys are tough.
We built our chimney after the house was finished, and we realized that.
The thing is, since, since I was little, you know, I, Dad had a log splitter pretty early on, but I thought that I should get the feeling of using an axe. And so I would go out there and split a bunch of wood by hand, and then I figured out how tired that is real quick, you know, so I went to use the log splitter.
How young were you?
So I've been born in ten.
How young were you when you decided to use the axe?
I was probably eight or ten.
Oh, okay.
You know, my kids back then were more grown up than they are today. My dad, he had to walk ten miles to school on hillbilly waves. I mean, we got off easy.
I think your dad and I went to school together.
You're from South Dakota too?
The thing is, so I had been helping with the wood stove, gone and helped them replace the chimney when it needed it and everything, and so when I designed the house that I live in, I says, I'm not gonna burn wood, this is ridiculous, way too much work, you know, but then the feeling you get from burning wood, knowing that some of the trees you took down that were dying or dead stating, and you burn those, and it feels good to know that you burned something that's renewable, you know?
I like the idea when the wife's cold, it's just my sweat I'm burning, it's not a bunch of oil, it's just me.
I don't know why, but I actually love splitting the wood, even if I'm doing a little wood splitting.
I'll give you a lot of opportunity to, to do the things you love. Come on over to my place, every time.
Neil, once, once they move in, my house is closer.
Well, no, but right now, we're closer to Neil, we live on Gold Road, so we're just down the street.
My neighbor and I up the road, we had a good deal. See, we'd turn four cords of wood a year, and so I would cut down eight or a tree and eat all these wood.
That's a good deal.
And so I got my four cords.
You guys stop in to see me tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much. Everyone, thank you for all your time. I know you're volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna take a shot.
We'll go to success.
Thank you. I hope it works out well.
Good luck.
You can join me if you want to.
Thank you too.
See you tomorrow.
Yes.
Yes, you do.
So you have nothing left to do but subdivision regulations?
Minutes.
Yeah.
Well, Chip's packing up, I see.
No, I'm just gonna go boot up.
Get the fit.
Who did the minutes last time?
John.
Who?
John.
Does anybody have a copy?
Yes.
Oh, I need a copy, you have a copy?
An extra copy?
Or if you mark it up, just so that I can, I never saw a copy of them.
Chip didn't fold you, or, he got the email.
Thank you all for volunteering.
Thank you.
Oh, if you'd like that, if you'd like to do that, I mean, you're always looking for a few good volunteers.
I've thought, I've thought about it.
We have room.
There's an empty chair?
There are two.
No, 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 there are two empty chairs tonight, but they're filled.
Maybe when my son's out of Cub Scouts, and I'm done volunteering there, then I'll-
I have no idea how much having children was gonna take up our time. Are you at ball games, Cub Scouts, off-ball?
Are you a doctor?
Assistant, assistant leader, and, and a secretary, no, I took her job as secretary for the Cubs, for PAC twenty-four. Oh, yeah, Matt called me on a Sunday, he goes, so we're doing the final, what do they wrap it up in the fall, and he goes, and I gotta put a secretary down, could you, okay.
It was almost volunteer.
Matt knows my number, so, thank you, good night, bye guys, bye-bye.
Let's start with October thirteenth minutes. Maybe, cause, how about April thirteenth?
Share.
I'm like, geez.
You said, oh, but we got those done a while ago.
Yeah, we did October thirteenth already, if we even had a meeting. Wow.
So you didn't take care of April thirteenth?
No, on purpose. John, John was the secretary, so.
Okay.
We were being, we were being, trying to be nice to him.
Let me just bring it up here, 'cause I don't have a copy of that printed.
That's some funny dates on there, isn't it?
One of the ones Bruce did, had the August month on them.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know how I did that.
You got it?
You got it?
Yep.
First line, Mr. Francisco emailed. Second, second sentence should be his reply. That was easy. Second page, second paragraph. Sentence starts out ninety-degree day. Near the end, you need a space between Mr. Meaney said.
So? Yep.
Why are all this all capital things?
That's this section. Just like-
Shouldn't that whole thing be deleted? Is that what you're saying, Craig?
I, I'm talking about the paragraph that says it needs to say no recycled materials, MSW, to be stored outside in all caps.
No, I'm looking at, after the paragraph you just referred to, Mr. Meaney said, it says, section three performance standard reviewed.
Oh.
What is that? Why is that there?
How about we say the, the board, how about the board reviewed section three performance standards, set it, I mean, in all caps?
Mike, Mike, what?
Or the board discussed. No, 'cause we, we, 'cause the odors in the, in that previous paragraph, we're on the fact that section three, actually, it's article three, in the zoning ordinance is covered all the nuisances and all that kind of stuff, access to the ways.
But that's, aside from the capital letter language, which isn't a sentence, it's just a couple of words. It, there's nothing said about that, so-
No.
Why doesn't this, why isn't that eliminated, and after a condition would need to be written in, period, and then the next word in that same paragraph is, if there is an issue odor, complaint would have to go to Mr. Meaney, et cetera.
I just, I'm, it-
Okay, is that what you want?
I just think we could, I said the board reviewed article three performance standards.
Then, then we need to say that, if that's what happened?
That's what happened, right.
Okay.
I think it was.
So after a condition would need to be written in, it's, it could say, the board then reviewed article three performance standard, period.
Yes. Yes.
And then continue, if there is an issue with odor, et cetera.
Oh, like, slow it, make it slow?
Yeah, it's one paragraph dealing with the same thing, and the sentence that's missing is one that says, the board then reviewed article three hyphen performance standard, not in caps, in ordinary print. And then continue on with the paragraph, if there is an issue, et cetera.
It wants to say article three, say article three.
W slash should be with.
It'd say article three point two.
Three point two?
Yes.
Yep.
So it's not W slash, I understand that's your shorthand, but.
Nope, that's fine, I fixed it.
I don't have anything else till the next, all caps.
Yes, Mr. Van Der Sluit's question for the applicant. That's not a sentence. Mr. Van Der Sluit asked the, asked the applicant, comma, or, no. Mr. Mr. Van Der Sluit asked, what is the powder that is put on the garbage? Who said, could we add all stored refuse would need to be removed within seventy-two hours? Does anyone remember? Was that John?
I think so. Pretty sure it was.
Then it should say, Mr. Van Der Sluit, then asked if we could, um.
We could ask.
If we could add the quoted material.
To the notes or something?
Yeah, add to the notes. And the, the word hours, HRS, the abbreviation hours should be spelled out, and the period should be inside the quotation marks. And the dash after Mr. Dahlberg in the next sentence should be removed.
Yep.
You guys are brutal. With John's, with John's.
Yeah, he stayed home a lot, but you think.
Guys, what does it mean? Marty, Marty has been offered to stay for ten years? Marty has been in business for ten years in Milford, is that what it is?
That's not how I took it. I took it that. They, he, they were, they would be okay if he stayed another ten years, is the way I.
Oh.
Who's they?
Mr. Dahlberg said Marty. So Mr. Dahlberg, I think, is he the one that you spoke to in Milford?
No.
Yeah.
Mr. Dahlberg is the surveyor.
Surveyor, he's sitting over there. I spoke with Lincoln Daly.
Was it Marty who said he had been?
I think it's, I think it was Marty has been in business for ten years, 'cause then it goes on to say, if there were major issues, it would have been in the email or phone call that I got from Lieutenant Milford.
All right, so, Ed, then?
So that should read, Marty stated he had been in Milford for ten years. And that if there were major issues, they would have been in the email.
Could I start the whole thing?
No, in, in Mr. Uh, Mr. Francisco's, in the email to Mr., or phone call to Mr. Francisco.
Email.
Can I repeat that? Well, Mr. Dahlberg said Marty stated he has been in Milford for ten years. If there were major issues, it would have been in the email to Mr. Francisco?
Yes, then put a period after Milford and capitalize the I and F. And Mr. Dahlberg doesn't see there is an issue.
Yeah, okay. Either way.
The last sentence?
Yes.
Mr. Dahlberg doesn't see there being an issue?
Strike the word being and substitute the word is.
Yes, got it.
What is MSW?
Manufactured, what is it, municipal solid waste.
But that's never been mentioned before, and to put an abbreviation in the middle of this. I think is.
I think you were reading, you were reading the note in the plan, the note in the plan did not have an explanation on it at that point. It is explained further down.
But, but since it's not in quotes, I think we need to say what that MSW is, not just put in abbreviation.
How about after C and D, put in parentheses, construction material, and after MSW, put in parentheses, municipal solid waste?
So s, after C and D?
In parentheses, construction.
And demolition.
Construction and demolition materials, close, okay, close parenthesis. End of comma. Materials that can be recycled, and MSW was what?
Municipal solid waste.
Trash.
So including municipal solid waste?
Yes.
So eliminate the MSW and substitute municipal solid waste.
So no quotes, just putting out municipal solid waste?
Yes.
Here too, so she put MSW in quotes, that way.
Well, that, that's part of my motion.
Then she could eliminate that down here, because she's putting it up here, the first time she uses it.
No, she can't change it to.
We can't change that, is that?
You're right.
Don't change the last sentence, that's what I'm talking about.
Bruce just explained why.
Yes, okay.
So am I getting rid of the MSW? And just putting municipal solid waste?
Sure.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm listening.
And the next sentence, all materials are to be processed inside the existing building. Okay, on the last line of that paragraph, after the first two words, shrink wrapping. This is the paragraph that starts, Mr. Kirk read proposed use.
Yep.
I'm looking at our secretary.
Yep, yeah, language about shrink wrapping.
Delete the comma after shrink wrapping, and then put a period at the end of the second, of the following sentence.
Got it.
And the, the next sentence should not be capitalized.
I think the next, I think that next paragraph should be deleted, it's the same as the previous one, we don't know who's saying it.
You're right, okay, delete that.
Yep.
Mr. Kirk asked about hydraulic fluids, period.
Yep.
A semicolon after fluids.
Yep.
Um, should we have in the minutes what eighteen means?
Should we note eighteen?
I don't know what, I don't know what it means now.
Eighteen must have been reformed to note eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
So that sentence should read, the board needs to make it clear what note eighteen means.
No, not the board. The applicant needs to clarify note eighteen.
Okay. You're right.
We don't do that.
The applicant needs to clarify note eighteen.
And the all caps, any changes should not be all caps.
And any changes require site plan approval. Bruce said. Just test annually for VOCs. And instead of the hyphen, it should be a period, and then if we go this route, comma, it's cheaper, period, no hyphen. A question was raised regarding annual testing. Colon, it is not required at the Milford location for the state license. And instead of no public comment?
I was gonna say, Mr. Francisco opened the hearing for public comment, hearing none, Mr. Francisco closed the public, public comment.
And, and that's not capped, it's just ordinary.
So Mr. Francisco opened for public comment?
Opened the hearing for public comment. Hearing no public comment, Mr. Francisco closed, closed for public comment.
Does that reflect on Mr. Francisco's hearing status?
Yes. I didn't open the public hearing, I opened it for public comment.
Right, and then you said, hearing no comment.
Did I say hearing at the end?
Yeah, well, the way you phrased it, it sounded as though you could have had a hearing issue.
Maybe I do.
Selective.
My, my wife says I need hearing aid sometimes.
Um, why do we have eight oh nine PM?
I was wondering the same thing.
Yeah, we don't need time.
Before I made a motion.
Yeah. You want me to get rid of the eight oh nine?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Mr. Francisco moved, not made the motion, but moved to approve under the following conditions, and I think we have to delete at least the, the words, Mr. Fillmore, we would never delete Mr. Fillmore.
There's nothing else there, right? That's, that's it.
So Mr. Francisco moved to approve.
Under the following conditions, colon.
Yep.
And Craig, what follows is what you moved?
On that page, yes. On last, on the next page.
Should I change where it says revised note eighteen, should I say revise note eighteen? That sounded note seventeen, or I said revise note seventeen?
No.
I think revise is correct.
Revised is right.
Yes.
D or no D?
No D.
No D. Got it.
But add note nineteen should not be capitalized. In the second sentence, you have contaminates, contaminants is previously submitted on, get rid of the three slash submitted?
Yep.
I think the next add note nineteen should probably read add note twenty.
Um, why should we test the previous contaminants as previously submitted?
On, on the.
Well, actually, I, no.
Pardon me?
I think that, I, I, you didn't get that?
No, I didn't have to say what you just said.
I, I, I'm trying to remember back, and I, when you were speaking, 'cause I, those ones I tried to get, like, exactly what you were saying, and I think you said add note nineteen, and then you said add note nineteen again.
No, I might have.
Okay, well, I didn't know if it needed to be added or not.
Your jo, your job is to interpret what he meant, not interpret what he said.
Right.
You're not taking minutes, you're taking thoughts, come on now.
All right, so I changed it to add note twenty.
Okay, but it should not, under note eighteen, it should not, the D should not be unrevised.
Right, I took that off.
Good.
Yes.
So on the, on this page also, so Craig's motion was to revise note eighteen, so revise note eighteen, strike the word needs to read, that's what his motion was.
Okay, so revise note eighteen to read.
And right, and then everything else is okay.
I think it's okay the way it is, revise note eighteen needs to read.
But this is all part of your motion, and your motion is, I moved that.
I didn't use proper English, so she should.
No, 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 you, you did, but I think it's just written differently. And then add note nineteen should not be capitalized.
Nope, got, already got rid of it.
And the number should not be.
Don't put the pound.
Correct.
All right. I'm getting rid of it on twenty.
Um, submitted on three, submitted on, you've got that duplication you should take care of.
Yep, already took care of it.
So the next step, the next note, add note nineteen, who's gonna say add note twenty?
Yep.
PLR thirty, three fifty drive over.
We haven't.
We have what?
The, water shall be tested for the same contaminants as previously submitted on three thirty-one seventeen, and then what are we saying about the results?
That to be submitted?
And results are to be submitted to the land use coordinator.
Yep.
It's land singular.
Land. Is it capital or?
No.
Okay.
He doesn't deserve capitalized.
He doesn't live in town.
And I'm not a member of the board. I'm a little owl.
So the, so it reads submitted, and the results are to be submitted to the land use coordinator?
Yes.
And then, Craig, is, is that second add note nineteen accurate?
I hope it should see add note twenty, but yes.
I've changed it to add note twenty.
What's PLR?
That's the, 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 stops there, the.
That's the thing they put underneath the door, keeps the water from seep, seep that.
We don't have to define that?
It's in the files.
Okay, PLR three fifty, drive over temporary removable barrier, put a comma after barrier, because I think you're describing it.
That's what, that's what.
Yep, to be placed under all overhead doors. Add note twenty-one, existing concrete floors shall be sealed to be watertight. I think watertight is one word.
I think so too.
And as much as I appreciate your capitalizing what I did.
Can I insert a sentence before you cap, or that?
Okay.
I think Bruce Fillmore seconded the motion.
For.
I think, the only reason I say that is 'cause you have Mr. Fillmore after my name.
Oh.
So it'd be Mr. Fillmore seconded the motion, then Neil can start rambling in capital letters, yelling at us actually, in capital letters.
Is that with capital letters?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, since I, I would refrain from yelling at these fine gentlemen at any time, uh, could you put that in lowercase?
So let's just.
And it should say.
It should say Mr. Kirk.
I, I changed that.
Okay.
And it, and it should say, not Neil, it should say Mr. Kirk.
I just said that.
Yep, voted, said, stated he would vote against this, as it is not a permitted use in the industrial zone.
In his opinion.
I wasn't stating it in your opinion, so obviously if I'm speaking, it's my opinion. Um, and after the, industrial zone, period. And continue the sentence, fat rendering, animal reduction, and, fat rendering and animal reduction do not belong in an industrial zone. What is this, against the garbage part?
Why are you, why are you talking like this? You're yelling at us, you're not making any sense.
So, Rand.
Hold on.
Why don't we just say this, Mr. Kirk voted against, stated he would vote against this, as it is not a permitted use in the industrial zone, period.
Yep, end of, end of story?
Yes.
Okay.
And delete everything else. And of course, that's not gonna be in capitals.
Yes, done.
And then.
Change it.
You already have Bruce settling, seconding, Craig.
Yes, before you settle anything.
Um, and how do we do votes? We're just.
Well, then, then you gotta move the sentence, the sentence that said John would like to see a cheaper water test, move that sentence up. And change it, instead of for Mr., for Mr. Francisco voting four one oh, motion passed four one oh.
Right, and instead of John, it's Mr. Van.
Oh, yes, it's, Mr. Van.
And what did you say about, uh, the voting four one?
Motion passed four one zero, instead of for Mr. Francisco. That'd be pretty cool though, that's from a low, something.
In order, in order to make these minutes, um, more readable.
Yep.
At the very beginning, where it says continuation site plan change of uses, on the very first page, after the list of names.
Yep.
Could, could you put, um, a Roman one? Before continuation?
Yep.
So Roman one, period, and then continuation of. Et cetera. And then when you get to page.
After the vote.
After the vote. Um, before review and update as necessary?
Yep.
So you, you have a vote four one, or whatever it was. Then the next thing would be Roman two.
Yep.
Um, and then the subtitle of that is, um.
Other business.
Uh, re, uh, sub, subdivision regulation review.
If I like other businesses.
And delete, delete the time. Did we do anything there?
No.
All I did was have, hand out, hand, pass things out.
Then under that, um.
So subdivision review?
The ch.
Why don't I make it Roman numeral two, other business?
Okay, Roman numeral two, other business.
And then just forget the other.
And under that, A. Mr. Francisco distributed documents, um, relating to the subdivision regulations. B. The minutes of the, what's the date of that meeting? Not previous, but we need to substitute dates.
April thirteenth?
Yeah, that was April thirteenth.
March. This is April thirteenth.
I'm getting there.
So it'd be April, it would be, um, March thirty-first, March thirty?
March thirtieth.
March thirtieth, yes.
Minutes, so B is, um, minutes of the March thirtieth meeting.
March twenty-third meeting.
Twenty-third.
March twenty-third meeting were approved five to zero, zero, um, on a motion by Mr. Kirk, seconded by Mr. Cloud. C.
So, A, Mr. Francisco distributed documents for where subdivision regulations?
Relating to where's subdivision was.
Well, I mean, you're hurt.
Review minutes.
The no, B would be the minutes of the March.
Twenty third.
Twenty third meeting were approved five zero zero on a motion by Mr. Kirk.
Good lord, you're changing everything.
Oh.
Seconded by Mr. Cloud, you can do it differently, but.
The horse is dead.
Minutes from three twenty three, two thousand seventeen.
Minutes of the meeting of three twenty three seventeen.
Yep, were approved five zero zero.
I would say Mr. Kirk moved accept first and then Cloud seconded, then then passed, motion passed five to five zero zero.
C.
And then are you ready for D?
Well, what was C?
C was just the the minutes of the meeting.
No, B was minutes of the meeting.
Yeah.
I apologize, then C is um.
Reappointing of officers.
Yeah, um. The.
I would say Mr. Bolton moved to. Mr. Francisco.
To reappoint, to reappoint officers, seconded by Mr. Kirk.
Mr. Bolton moved to reappoint officers?
Move that the that the officers be reappointed. Seconded by Mr. Kirk. Period. Vote.
Motion passed five zero zero.
Vote, uh colon, five zero zero. Is that, how do you want to say it, Craig?
I would just say motion passed five zero zero.
Motion passed five zero zero. We need to be consistent so that our secretary can do this without us changing our minds every two, every.
Be a good idea, yes.
And and on adjournment, I don't think we need to go through all of this motions and stuff. I think all the secretary needs to do is to say the meeting adjourned at eight forty six.
No, I think we need to have a motion in a second.
I was saying, I I was going by the meeting prior.
Yeah, you're 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 absolutely right, I'm just.
Unless I close the meeting, which I would I hate to do.
Fine. Then then you're correct.
I would like to add one thing that I completely forgot about. In the very first sentence, very first page, not first sentence, first page, first page. Uh instead of bold email to Chip, I would say Mr. Francisco read an email. To Chip Meany from Jerry Haynes.
So you, say it again?
Mr. Francisco read an email addressed to Chip Meany from Jerry Haynes.
On on the first page where you have that email.
Where the bold thing is, take the bold thing out.
Mr. Francisco read an email.
Could change my name to little L?
So it's a little C too?
So Mr. Francisco read an email. From Jerry Haynes?
Yes.
Yes.
And you don't want a bold?
No. Just.
Does it look okay though otherwise?
Yes.
Sure. Are we ready for a motion?
Say it.
I'll make a motion, we approve the April thirteenth.
Minutes.
Minutes as amended.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be four zero this time.
Jen, the reason for putting on numbers, the Roman letter, the Romans and the letters, is so that when people read it, they know this is one entire subject matter.
Yes.
And then another entire subject matter and so forth.
Got it.
Like John did his, he has one, two, four.
Who did second it then?
I did.
Do you want to go over these April twenty seventh ones?
I don't I don't have those.
And she doesn't have them, right?
You're gonna have them on your machine?
No, they weren't sent to me.
The ones I've bled all over.
Yeah, we can wait till you get them.
I'll send them to you tomorrow.
John did them, you weren't here.
John did them?
Yeah.
This is the twenty seventh, that was the day that I was at, oh yes, I was in Phoenix. Are they timed?
It's a good day to take off.
Oh, really?
Yeah. You've been taking notes.
Oh, John must love me, I I I owe him big time, I guess.
So can we do the site walk for the date, the minutes dated March twenty ninth, it was actually on April twenty ninth? Bruce did. But I was the only one at, but that's alright.
Um, I move that we accept those minutes as perfect.
Except for the date being changed to March to April instead of March.
Yeah, we fixed the date.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's it's somewhat less than perfect, I guess.
I'll send you that.
Okay, so what am I reading?
Neil just made a motion to accept the minutes of April twenty ninth, two thousand seventeen as amended.
I'll second.
He wrote it.
He can second.
He can second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I, hey, there was. Better than I. Yes. In fact, I'm thinking of swapping places, you could be secretary, I'll be vice chairman.
That was a site walk, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you think we should have Jen come with us on the site walk so she gets the full experience?
No, 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 no.
The minutes be too long. Want to give this to her? That way she at least has a paper copy?
Sure, but I will send them electronically.
So she doesn't have to retype them.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask her to retype, no. The only thing I have is going over site plant site or subdivision regulations. And the first question I'm gonna ask is, did anybody look at Mr. Drescher's listing comments?
It's been a while.
I tried, I refreshed, tried to refresh your memory two week or a month ago. I still have lots of copies, just a taste.
You don't really need me for this.
Are you talking about Drescher's letter dated December twenty second sixteen?
Actually, I'm talking about a piece of paper that down the bottom has May twenty fourth, two thousand sixteen on it.
From Drescher?
Not even a letter, just a note.
Was that attached to the minutes that are the proposal you sent us?
What's that?
I said you knew you were using this.
Yes, I knew it, he does.
Yeah, this is it, yep.
I still got three.
I got that.
Okay, good. I still got three left.
Could I have one?
I want her to.
I don't want any. I'm a little L.
Little L, little C.
Could we just put this in the definition second, Craig?
Uh, this would replace.
We took it out of the zoning ordinance.
No, we haven't. We have not taken that into consideration, not yet.
No, because we had to have it somewhere.
Right. It's already in here someplace, but not where it was where it possibly.
Two point five.
Thank you. Two point five?
I don't know, yeah.
Yes, exceptions is a. So basically, we can't, we shouldn't change the first paragraph or what it says under A or what it says under B.
Where are you finding B? Uh-oh.
A, B.
Right, alright.
Um, what page is this on?
Two, bottom of my page two, two point five exceptions, title right now.
Page two of the subdivision regulations?
Yes.
I'm gonna think number one there could be replaced by this A and this is what?
I'm talking about getting rid of all of this and inserting this.
Which?
Be rid of two point five entirely, and this becomes two point five.
What's on the line about two point five?
Well, it doesn't reference the right RSA anywhere. It doesn't, it doesn't legally address the situation at all.
Yeah, well, you would need A and B for.
We need the first paragraph pursuant to RSA six seventy four, colon, thirty nine, comma, Roman numeral parentheses, Roman numeral three, end of parentheses. We'd need A.
You know, I think you need the two point five, still need the two point five, and then this.
I think it says need to say two point five exceptions, then this.
Yeah, right at the first comma, it says, from all subsequent changes in those subdivision regulations, period. And then put this in.
Why do we need any of this, any of the existing?
Because the only thing that this says, if you eliminate everything in two point five, pursuant to the authority set forth, the planning by the planning board hereby determines that the stretch. Threshold levels of work that shall constitute the following terms shall be as follows, what the hell does that have to do with anything?
Look at Article six seventy four thirty nine and you'll. Understand it.
I believe it defines substantial completion, which our subdivision does not.
So six seventy four thirty nine is going to have to say that um plats that are. Plats that meet the threshold level of work are exempt from future. But Bruce is going to read it to a three.
Well, within a certain timeframe.
Uh-oh.
Thirty nine, Roman three.
The planning board may as part of its subdivision site plan regulations or the condition of site approval, it says the same thing it does right there. Except one, one and two aren't there. RSA says the same thing it does here, the first paragraph, A and B.
So if we put in all of the language that appears on that page. And delete all of the language under two point five exemptions, keep the title two point five exemptions. And then put in all of Drescher's language. That does the job?
If that's what we want, if that's what we want for the level of completion.
Assuming that we want that level of completion.
Yes, that does the job, according to Mr. Drescher, that's what he.
So we don't need to say, we don't need to say every plat is exempt if it meets the following conditions.
Nope. Six seventy four thirty nine, Roman numeral one covers that.
Which we don't have to put again.
Six seventy four thirty nine, colon, one is pretty much, was probably what this said.
Yeah. Do you have some pro, forgetting about for the moment, whether it's a total substitution or a partial substitution, do you have a problem with what Drescher has written here? The substances of?
I personally do not, I think the person sitting to my right probably does, meaning Chuck. Is under B one.
When does B one apply?
Let me use back to six seventy four thirty nine.
There's active and substantial.
We don't, you're you're thinking, I don't wish to act the fees part of it.
Substantial completion of the improvements.
No, it's a definition, but where is it in the?
The rights of the owner, owner's successor interest shall vest in those subsequent changes and subdivision regulations. Except impact fees. Shall operate to affect these such improvements. That's the five year thing. The active substantial, I believe, has to happen within one year, twenty four months, excuse me.
One substantial is shown.
Active has to happen within two years.
Yeah.
Substantial is five years.
I can make.
I got it.
Yes.
I think Craig is right, it substitutes for everything because. If the statutory provisions of Roman one and Roman two, even though they're not in our ordinance. I mean, we could copy them and put them in the ordinance.
We we could copy the whole thing and put it in there if we wanted to.
Right, but we would still need these definitions.
We still need one, two, A, Bs, yes.
And basically substantial completion means the roads are in, drainage is in.
That has to happen within the five year period for vesting. Active substantial has to happen in the first two years.
Do we need, instead of just exemptions, do we need to break that down into? There's essentially the, the two year. Approval and then the five year. There's essentially the, the two-year approval, and then the five-year exemption? Because it's really two different things. The approval is if the conditions of approval are met, but no work has begun. What's the big difference between A and B?
Okay, let's back up. Let's say today we grant somebody conditional approval.
Right.
And the condition is, the surveyor has to stamp the plan.
They've got two years.
Something very simple.
To meet the conditions.
One.
To record the plan.
One. For our regulations.
Okay.
So we have a conditional approval. All they need to do is have the surveyor stamp the plan. It takes them 352 days to get the surveyor stamp the plan. So then, a year later, they get final approval. Roughly. However, when I sign the plan, I'm backdating it a year. Because I signed it for the date of the meeting.
The meeting date.
Okay, and?
So they have two months from the meeting, two years from the meeting date to achieve active and substantial development, to get vested.
And that's for five years?
That's, that's active and substantial.
That's just to get the...
Right, active and substantial is for five years.
No, active and substantial.
No, they're vested from changes in zoning period if they do the active substantial. Well, I read it.
Well, once they get substantial completion, then they're...
Yes, I'm sorry, Neil, you're right.
They have to hit substantial completion to be the vested overall developer. Well, a question on A. First of all, there's three options. The, the, the two that are listed, or something the planning board comes up with. It's either one or two.
And we can change one or two.
And we can, right, there's three.
Three.
So let me see if, if I can say it. If, if a planning, if a, um, proposed subdivision is approved, and active and substantial development has begun within 24 months, and we define what that is, then...
He's vested for the five years.
He's vested for five years.
From the?
From the time of approval, not conditional approval.
Yes, conditional approval.
From the time of conditional approval, right. If during that five-year period, he, the project is substantially completed, then he is permanently exempted from subsequent changes.
Correct. I am sorry, I should have reread this stuff myself.
So, what active and substantial development means, and what substantial completion means, are very important for the developer. Because these are things that give them a great deal of protection from subsequent zoning changes. So for the two-year, active and substantial, he, he has to construct, e, e, either we do something specific, which I can't think that we've ever done.
No, we haven't.
Right. So, that's one. So, number two, he has to construct one or more subdivision roads to a level sufficient for Chip to, uh, issue a CO.
Right.
What does one or more mean? I mean, if he has shown one on one, he has to have all of them done? Or he can just show numerous roads, and all he needs to do is one road?
I would say he could have 24 roads and have to do one.
Do what?
Has to be working on one.
And we, who defines what a road is?
The plan.
The plan, and we do.
Well, say there were a whole, say this is a circle. Entry, circular, exit. Entry and exit are the same.
The whole thing is a road.
The whole thing's a road. And off that circle are three other...
Roads.
Roads. Those would be roads. So he's got five roads. Four roads, the circle plus, okay.
Circle and three cul-de-sacs, yes.
So all he has to do, in theory, is not put in the circle and the entryway and exit, he just puts in one of the roads connected to nothing?
Uh, well, he has to be able to get his certificate of occupancy.
And Chip presumably wouldn't do that, okay, got it.
Yeah, he wouldn't get an occupancy.
Has to be classified road the whole way.
The, yeah, no, the entrance has to be based, based on the paving.
So?
No, but it has to be, where, being built to classify standards to the house.
But he couldn't, he couldn't build half the circle?
If he had a phasing plan that said that, I think he could. But I don't think he could do it if it wasn't shown on a phasing plan or something that way.
And he also has to complete drainage improvements. And, in addition to this, he has to comply with all public health regulations and provide security.
Yes.
Bond.
I mean, the only way you could have numerous road showing would have to be phased, right?
Would have to be.
Duck Pond had a bunch of roads, didn't it?
It has a bunch of phases too.
Oh. Now, so now he's...
Depends on the economy, basically.
Why would you just show fifty feet of road, where Golden will do that, and away we go?
If we approve it, yeah.
Yeah.
If we're dumb enough to approve it.
So now he's in there, he, he's substantially completed, sorry, he's active and substantial development.
I think, I think to back up, you'd have to have a phase done, because it says at the end, in accordance with the approved plans, at the end of A.
Yep.
But I think it'd have, the plan would have to say phase one, two, three, and he's working on phase one up to the level of CO.
Okay.
I, I assume that's what that part means.
So, the developer now has an active and substantial development ongoing, he's got his road in. It's two years later.
Yep.
Four years later, he has put in a base coat for all subdivision roads.
For all the roads, that's right, like, it's that one, but all of them.
Yes, exactly.
Or...
Or roads included and required as part of any active phase, wow. That means the road that he put in for active and substantial development could constitute the road for substantial completion.
Right.
But that would mean that only the part of the...
No.
Development that was act, that was substantially completed would be sub, would be exempt from future zoning changes?
No, the subdivision plan is exempt.
Then isn't this, uh, then Doug, don't we have to amend this, if that, if we're reading it correctly?
I don't think we can, uh, Mr. Drescher and I talked about that for a while. I, he doesn't feel, and I don't feel, you can re, that's where I went. Revoke part of a subdivision approval?
I'm sorry?
I don't think you can revoke part of a subdivision approval. You can't revoke an approval on phase two if phase one is done? If it's phase one?
No, phase two is out.
Why?
Because he didn't complete all the roads.
It's one subdivision, it's one plan, it's one vested.
But he's only...
Well, we, we've already granted that application to, you know...
Let me get this, the planning board.
But then, then the town's getting nothing.
There's, there's several reasons to phase a subdivision. And not all of us for the developer. The town wants, wants it phased because it's going to limit building permits per year, it's going to meet the zoning better.
Real heavily located, yeah.
Sure we do.
Yeah, we do.
But what you're saying is that any developer is going to come in and say, "I want a ten-phase plan, and I'm going to put into effect plan one, phase one, which is two houses out of a hundred."
We don't approve it.
So then every time we approve something, we have to make sure that such a significant part of the development is done in phase one.
Yes.
But then that defeats the whole purpose of, of, uh, phasing in the building permits and growth of the town. We gotta change this.
At the same time, if a client comes in, if it looks better. If someone comes in and has sixty lots.
And, and we want, we want five twelves.
Yes.
Five phases of twelve lots per phase, for a whole bunch of reasons.
Right, so does he, because, well, you do, because therefore he does too. You're not going to give him sixty building permits. So why is he going to build road for sixty lots?
And so?
In year one and two.
And you want him to have the entire...
So therefore, we're going to phase it.
And the entire thing is...
We, we, my client, we, the planning board, are going to phase it. And we're going to try to do something, we're going to try to phase this thing so you get twelve lots a year. Because that's, whatever, whatever the best... The problem is...
Second, third, fourth, and fifth, fifty years later.
The problem is, the problem is, the economy goes there, crap. And all of a sudden, he can't afford to build any more road, because he can't sell lots he's already built for. So why does, why does he want to build more road, to keep it vested?
But why does he want, but why in that case should his, the subdivision, the remaining four fifths, the remaining forty-eight lots, why should that be grandfathered and prevent...
Because he spent a million dollars in the first phase.
What does that have to do with the second, third, fourth, and fifth phase?
I think that's quite of a substantial completion.
He's got five years to...
He's not selling anything. You get, you get a million, million and a half dollars wrapped up in a subdivision, you're going to say, you're going to lose that, you're going to lose four fifths of it?
No, you've got to comply.
So, so, let's see if I have this straight. The word goes out, planning board is talking about changing building lot sizes. We're going to go from two acres to fifty acres.
Two acres to five acres, like we did.
He still needs to maintain his, according to number two.
He has to maintain his bond.
He still has to maintain his bond for the rest of it.
But that's relatively small potatoes in terms of cost.
Eh, not necessarily.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent of what?
Of the total cost.
It's what he pays for bond?
Yep.
You mean if it's a million-dollar project?
Yes. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Is that how much he has to bond, or is that how much he has to pay for the bond?
No, that's, that's the amount of dollars that has to be bonded and held until the road is accepted by the town.
Right, and he goes to a bonding company, which promises to do that, and he pays them five thousand dollars.
Whatever.
But, but the point is, it doesn't cost him two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
It costs somebody that, because if...
You know, that's a promise. Bonding company makes, isn't that the case, Craig?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Bonding company makes a promise, yeah, insurance bonds.
They're on the board, it's something to do.
Right.
So then somebody's paying for it. Even if it's an insurance company. No, the builder's paying five. If he, if he reneges, the insurance company's paying two-hundred-and-fifty, forty-five.
That's because they got five hundred, five thousand for him, for him, 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 him. So they've got three hundred thousand at five thousand a pump, and only one of those goes bad.
That's how they, that's how they make their money.
Absolutely. So you think this is fair?
The guy's going to keep paying the bond, he'll get it done.
We should let them go home and think about this.
They close the bar, they...
Doesn't matter. I have a bottle of tequila at home for just such occasions.
Yeah, is A 674, shed any light on what we're talking about?
It says the planning board can do whatever we want, basically.
Oh, okay.
The problem that we had in the past was the planning board did not specify what the substantial completion was. And there was nothing in our regulations that required you guys to say, "Okay, you've got to build all the roads, or half the roads, or..."
Yeah, but my understanding is, is we're dead on the water because X amount of years ago, we put the regulations that we had in the wrong...
The ones in the zoning are...
And, and this is, this is an attempt to correct that.
What is the status of existing subdivisions? If they haven't worked...
You gotta pick one to have, to get an answer.
Depends on whether they're vested or not.
Um, five, uh, eight years ago, we approved a fifty lots, I'm making this up. We approved a fifty lots subdivision, the developer has done nothing. He's got a sign up there saying lots for sale, like Orchard Hill.
He's done nothing?
No, he's done nothing except...
He's, he's lost his vesting.
He's got, it's over, forget it.
He's what?
He's lost his vesting.
Because?
He enjoyed it.
No, we didn't have any regulation.
Doesn't matter, the RSA's cover that. In the absence of...
Yeah, if, if you, if you don't specify, that trumps.
Every year, the planning board is specified by regulations, the condition of subdivision plat, approval that which shall constitute, quote, "Active substantial development or building," and a quote, "Shall entitle a subdivision plat or site plan approved by the planning board to have a five-year exemption," described paragraph one. Planning board may for good cause extend the 24-month period, so... So what this says here is what goes if we don't say anything else. Which means you have X, he has like, I, two, five years.
I thought your answer was going to be, if and when we have another development, we should make it our business to define in that development, in the approval, what constitutes.
Well, I think we should, but...
But you still need to have this in your regulation.
We still have to have something in the regulation, we can't just, if we forget, which happens.
But, maybe I'm wrong on this, that that only applies to active and substantial. It doesn't apply to substantial completion.
When you said it, what do you mean it?
If the planning board decides to define in the plan, in the conditions of the plan, what active and substantial development is, in other words, one, under Drescher's...
Oh, yes.
That only applies to the active and substantial.
No. If you tell him what to do, that's exactly what he has to do. If you say you're going to build five roads, you got to build all five of them before you're vested. Then that's what he has to do.
We can change substantial completion, instead of saying on a minimum base course, we can say, "Sluckman have to accept the road." If you wanted to.
I, I can understand A, but what the, I'm not even, what is the purpose of B? And if we, if we've already...
A gives him five years, and B gives him lifetime.
B is, once they hit that threshold, it's good.
And Craig, the way this is written, anything we put in the plan as a condition only applies to active and substantial, and only covers years through, through the fifth year. Because it's A, one, or two.
Is there a way, Craig, to daisy chain phases together? So let's say, phase one, they got substantial completion, but they haven't even touched phase two or beyond yet. And then, once they get substantial completion of phase one, that starts a five-year clock for them getting phase two done?
Well, that goes back to, you're going to get, you could get into, and we will, I mean, we, the town, will. If you do a cluster subdivision, right? Fifty percent gets needed to somebody.
Some other entity, the easement.
Right. Immediately. Property lines are blazed, they're monumented.
Right, but...
Fifty percent of property is gone. The developer builds phase one, he gets, back to Neil's, sixty lots, he gets twelve, he can get twelve building permits on phase one. So he gets these twelve building permits, builds nine houses. The economy tanks.
See, what you have to, what you have to do with clusters, I think, to, to, well, stop that problem, what you're getting to is, you really can't, because now they're in trouble, because now they can't meet any regulations, because they've already given up, their easement has already been defined, and they can't change the definition of that easement.
Right.
As far as the boundaries.
They don't own it.
Because they don't own it, right. We see that problem.
Right.
But I think...
So how can you, how can you revoke the approval of part of the subdivision, if half it's already given away? That's, that's a substantial, huge investment.
Right, but I think a way to, around that is, on, on, in case like that, is to, um...
You're not going to say, "Phase the open space," or...
No, 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 but if you, it's, once they get phase one done, see, because right now, in this town, you can, in most towns, you'll do it, on a phase one, you put up a reclamation bond or something, or like, you get the road built, and you just bond your final coat, whatever else needs to be done.
Right.
It saves, it saves a lot of...
Some vegetating, yes.
Right. But then, once they, once the phase one is done, then, to ensure that the other phase is done, they have to bond everything on the other phases. No reclamation bond is acceptable anymore.
That's what we're saying.
Because the minute they stop paying a bond for the whole amount...
That's what we're saying, in substantial completion, you have to have a bond.
They'll want to get it done. Because bonds aren't as cheap as they used to be. They'll wanna get it done, because bonds aren't as cheap as they used to be. Used to be bonds are one percent, now, now they're not, they're five.
Yeah, work.
If you're good.
I don't think that solves the problem.
It does, because it really, it's gonna, once the bond expires, once they let that bond lapse, then everything's out the window.
We got one that just expired.
You don't know what it's for?
No. No, it says road, and there's no road going into this project. We can't discuss that.
If they got two million dollars worth of road to build, and they cost them five percent for the bond, they're not gonna wanna pay that for too many years before they get the thing built.
Well, what this allows you to do, this is a trigger mechanism for the planning board to be paying attention to what they give for conditions that will meet the substantial, active and substantial, and what will meet completion of improvements. In the past, that has not been done, because this article does not say this. It comes close, but nobody ever paid attention to it.
I never really thought about it, but you're right, a million dollars a road's gonna cost you fifty grand a year.
Yeah.
A million dollars a road, you're really not pretty much road.
No.
I also think at, at present, what you're really seeing is.
So you're giving, you're giving away a lot a year.
We're not doing, we're not doing anything but small subdivisions.
No, I understand.
I mean, it's.
Nobody is right now.
I know. So your substantial completion's gonna be one road? For most of them, and most of them, they're subdividing along town roads, existing town roads, so they don't have to build these things.
Okay, but even if you're building one road, you could build one long road like Brookshire and phase it. Brookshire was phased. You can still phase it. Neil, the answer to your question previously Bruce brought up that I missed myself. You, in your situation, you have sixty lots, you build enough road, you get twelve lots, that's phase one, and you have it defined in the plan, five different phases. You build phase one, you sell eight houses, eight houses are built. The economy tanks. You're in year three, to keep your vesting, you have to bond all the rest of the road. Maintain bond at five percent.
Bonds aren't as cheap as they used to be. So it used to be, it used to be you get a bond for one percent, those days are over.
And four thousand feet of road is roughly gonna cost you a million dollars to build, that's gonna be fifty grand a month, fifty grand a year. At five, his five percent.
Just to keep the bond active.
If you don't lose it.
Yeah, but that doesn't solve the problem.
What's the problem?
The problem is, is we're trying to, after a certain time period, have the developer be responsive to or responsible for adhering to whatever regulations there are. So, the building of the road only makes things worse, not, if you're suggesting that you have to build a road for four phases and we, I, I don't think that that really solves anything. I, I can understand what you're saying about the, if it wasn't a cluster, it wouldn't be a, this wouldn't be a problem, at least, right? If it, because all land is given away.
I don't know if you can revoke part of a subdivision's approval, I've never heard of it being done.
Yes, subdivision is subdivision, it stays a subdivision, the only thing that's impacted is the size of the lots.
Realizing this also means site plans, so that could be a multifamily building, apartment building.
Right.
You'd have, you'd have a site plant with two, two apartment buildings on it.
It could be a subdivision of five lots along the town existing roads, they don't build a house on any of those lots in five years.
There's no offset improvements to do.
Yeah, but, okay, it, it doesn't say anything about offset improvement. Well, the problem we're worrying about is, would be live subdivisions.
Why?
Because there's really not much of a problem on the small ones. It's gonna be, cause it's gonna be a section of road, he either done or isn't done in five years.
Or he bonds it.
Or he bonds it.
Have you, have you ever heard?
What you're saying is, if he bonds it, he escapes any, 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 uh, being, having to adhere with any subsequent, I, I don't think that's correct.
But you can put a guy easily out of business by changing your zoning regulations in midstream if he hasn't gotten something vested, and I can, I'm not gonna do it on TV, but I have some examples of people that that happened to.
That's why these are, that's why these are there to begin with.
So.
These are here for two reasons, one to protect the town, and two to protect the developer. As blunt as I can.
Yeah, but he doesn't protect the town.
It certainly does, if the, if the developer doesn't do anything, he loses his vesting.
That's right, and if he, and if he, if he's got a hundred lot subdivision, and builds, a hundred yards of road, he's, he's good forever.
If the planning board is dumb enough to have a hundred yards of the road in phase one, and the developer pays the bond.
Enough, it's fine enough.
And, and the developer is smart enough that's bonded the whole road, yes, you're right.
Let's talk about that. Phase one has a hundred feet of road.
Okay.
And the, there's another five thousand feet of road in the other phases, or whatever.
He's good for five years.
Hold on. The developer, under this.
That's a, that's a, that's a crazy assumption.
Okay, give me a more realistic one. Five thousand feet of road, a thousand for phase one, a thousand for.
I mean, he's gonna go what he can do.
You don't need me.
For, for a cul-de-sac, or for a cistern, there's gonna be some logical reason why he goes for a certain one. It's, it's gonna be, he's gonna go as far as he can on one cistern that he has to put in, and really needs a cistern.
Okay.
Because that's a, that's a, it's a large monetary.
Fine, let's, let's assume that phase one includes all of that stuff, and there are comparable phases for two, three, and four, okay? And, the developer, within two years, constructs one subdivision road approved by the planning board, phase one.
The, the length of that road was approved.
Yes, and he does that.
Yeah.
Okay? And it's done to a standard that causes Chip to be eligible to give him a certificate of occupancy. Okay, he does all of his drainage, et cetera, with that. Okay? And, he provides adequate security for the rest, at fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, and I think what we need to change, one thing that we need to change, it's gotta be in there somewhere, to get that, amount of that security up, I mean, we allow, if they don't apply for any building permits, they can build a road, and the only thing they have to put up for bond is, like a reclamation bond, if they get the road halfway built, and they crap out, what, you know, it's, it's peanuts, it's ten percent of the cost of the road or something.
But this, but this is not what it says.
Now, wait a minute, so they can, so all we have to do is make them, at the end of that phase one, the reclamation bond for the rest of the road doesn't work, they have to bond the entire amount for constructing that road, including cisterns and everything else that needs to go with it.
For the entire project, or just?
For the whole rest of the project. And that's gonna make the bond amount pretty substantial.
Okay, so then we strike out.
That's right. Okay.
We strike out the language that says, or such current phases determined by the board. So, we, the guy's put in phase one, and he's bonded the entire rest of the project.
With all the improvements.
With all the improvements, at fifty thousand a year, or whatever it is.
It's gonna be substantially more than that.
Okay, you're talking about, you're talking about after, after year two. You have constructed phase one.
Yes.
Got building, ready to get building permits.
Within twenty-four months.
Twenty, yes, in two, two years, you gotta have, you gotta have phase one constructed.
The road.
The road.
And drainage.
Yes, and all the accessories, all it.
Yep.
And post a bond, everything else.
Yes.
Then he's good.
Then, no, then he has completed, he has qualified for active and substantial development, and now, and, and so that he's exempt from zoning changes for five years.
Right.
Okay.
For three more.
For three more.
Yes.
He does nothing, and the economy tanks.
Yep.
Okay, he's still making his bond payments.
Yeah.
Because he's optimistic. Okay? Now, the question is, does he get permanent exemption? And to do that, not just five years, but permanent, to do that, he has to substantially complete the improvements. And we've defined that to mean, the construction to a level of completion, including at a minimum base coat of pavement, we could change that, but that's what we have now, of all subdivision roads as approved by the planning board, or all roads included and required as any part of any active phase. So the planning board could say, Bruce, or developer, we are now going to accept as active, as substantial completion, what you've already done.
Well, the only thing is, this needs to be defined before Bruce ever gets his plan approved.
And, yes, and that's why, since.
So, so, so everybody knows what the rules are before the game gets played.
But the rules, the rules are, as Mr. Drescher has put them here, as I described them, because it's in the, it's in the opinion of the planning board. Now, the condition, and this was Bruce's point before, he continues to comply with public health requirements, including maintaining adequate security to fully complete the improvements. Okay, so even if the board says, fine, substantial conclusion is phase one, the planning board cannot.
No.
Tell Bruce, no bond is necessary for phases two, three, and four. Bruce, you have to, you have to do the bond for two, three, and four. If Bruce, in the sixth or seventh year, says, that's it, my crystal ball says, the economy is never changing, and I'm out of this. If Bruce, at that point, lets the bond go.
Then the whole thing's.
Then, he is, exactly, then he is now subject to any subsequent changes.
Even though he sold ten lots.
He sold ten of the first twelve lots.
The ones that roads built, those are still viable lots.
And he could sell the other two. Cause that, I think that phase is permanently grandfathered. We couldn't come in and say, instead of two acre zoning, it's ten acre zoning, and Bruce says, wait a second, I got two lots that were approved.
In between other houses.
Right.
You'd be a good way to go.
Yeah. What, what I would do, Craig, is in part B, I would strike out the bolded language, or all roads included and required as any part of any active phase. So the requirement is, he has to finish all of his roads within five years.
All, all.
Of the entire, of all phases.
All of them.
No. He has to finish them. If you, if you cross out what I said, then the language that remains is, substantial completion means the construction to a level of completion, including at a minimum base coat of pavement of all subdivision roads. Completion of drainage, in accordance with the approved plans, and then the conveyance of open space. And in addition, he has to provide a bond to make sure that the base coat.
Well, wait a minute, if you're saying, including, if you're saying including conveyance to the town of any required improvements, open space, or other, isn't the required improvements the road? And doesn't that mean the road has been done? See, I was gonna go a different way and say phase one had to be accepted by the Sloughman, by year five.
Well, that's kinda tough, because.
I know, I don't like it either, but.
You don't want the road paved.
I know.
While the building on it.
I know.
You really want all the houses built before you make them, put the finished coat on the road. You know, there's a minimum of a year we want them to hold it, but you really want them to hold it until all the houses are built. Because then, when you put the finished coat down, it stands a much better chance of lasting a lot longer.
And force them to repave it. Force them to pave it again.
It'd be smarter if they don't pave it the first time.
If we're forcing them to pave the first time, we have to force them to pave it second time, that's all.
Yeah, that's not good.
But, even if he's conveyed the road to the town.
It has to be, it has to be.
He has to be.
He can't.
The county can't accept it?
No, have to.
Even if there's a bond?
No.
You're sure?
Positive.
It's done.
Then, oh, I see, and you don't want the base, you don't want anything more than the base coat.
Right. Well, he puts in any section of the road, he's gonna have to buy that land beneath this road out of current use, too, right?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if that's very costly. You wouldn't have to do the lots, just the road. Right, I mean, you can't take the, you can't take the land out of current use until you actually change the use of it, so you can't, really, you can't take the lots out until you pour concrete on them.
Bruce, I, I mean, excuse me, Craig, I wonder if you could ask Drescher if Bruce is right, that when the town, that the only way that town can take title to the required improvements, if they're completed, and to see if the town couldn't take title to an unfinished road, provided there was a bond.
Why would we want to?
Be, because I.
I don't see how we'd wanna do that.
The only, the only way to even think, want of that, is if you had cash.
I was gonna say, if you had cash bond, yeah.
And, and you can't require that for this.
If you, if you accepted the road, and then needed the base course of pavement, or you're wearing course of pavement on it, a little bit of vegetation here and there.
So let's say we eliminate the language, including the conveyance to the town of any required improvement, open space, or other. Basically, if you want the lifetime protection, you gotta get all your roads in, base coat. No conveyance to the town, and the continued compliance with public health, including security. So, the town doesn't have title to the roads, but you're for, you're really exempted from future zoning changes.
Well, yeah, if he spends all his money, he's exempt. He builds everything, he's exempt, is what you're saying.
No.
Yes. Well, you can't build the road without the detention bond, you can't build, you can't do anything, you can't build the road.
The only thing you get away with is not building.
Fire system, that's it.
Totally putting houses in that section.
You have to do the ditches, you have to do text spaces, you have to do all this.
So the, shouldn't the development be complete before he gets a lifetime exemption from future changes?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Good God, in five years.
That's unreasonable?
Very.
For a large development, very unreasonable.
I think it would mean that.
I don't know where it was here, I just had it.
It's, it's not gonna get dragged out as much as you think, with the bonding, what, what bonds cost today.
You mean he'll abandon the project?
He'll, if he can't afford to do it, he'll walk on it.
If you have, if you have a twenty-nine lot subdivision.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight lot subdivision, excuse me. Which isn't very big, really.
No.
You have to take four and a half years to build that.
Because.
Phasing.
Phasing.
You have to.
They're gonna, they can build the whole road, and sit on it, and pay, and pay on, pay interest on it, cause he's not gonna pay out of pocket.
If the economy's not at the level to be the phasing, he's gonna get, I'm like this, can't say the word. I mean, we're forcing developer to take five years. So we're forcing them to take five years to build the houses, and we're forcing them to build the road in five years.
And that's unfair.
So, if the economy's good, he can't build more than he has to, more than this number. If the economy's bad, he has to build the road anyway. How is that fair?
Well, what would be fair? I think the goal here is that, at some point. Make him do the full bond on that, everything he doesn't build, to get, once the first phase is done. Have them be responsible to adhere to the existing zoning.
He can't, he's, if, if we force him to a cluster, which we probably will, half his land is gone.
Especially on something that size, you know he's gonna end up laying, it'll be a cluster.
Half his land is gone, so therefore, his yield's gonna be at least half.
Now they can't.
Probably less than that.
You know, the cluster, I'm familiar with, Tootie, every one of them. The developer was dollars ahead because of the cluster, cause he built a short road with all the houses that he could possibly put on that lot. I don't know how they could possibly lose.
Well, maybe, maybe the subdivision didn't work unless it was a cluster.
Well, you tell me the ones, there were a lot of those for a short period of time, and then they loved them. Uh, and I don't blame them. In other words, the land that they didn't build was either too steep, or whatever the reason, what you couldn't build on it. So, it was a win-win, sort of, because, uh, you know, I just don't buy that because the, the developer deeded land, it was land that he didn't wanna develop anyway, every time it was.
I'm gonna disagree a hundred percent with you.
That's all right.
I know it's not right.
Well.
I, I can think of two instances right off the top of my head, that's not true.
So, how, how, how does this get resolved so that it protects the town, and that it makes it financially feasible for a developer to phase his, his subdivision in? Is Bruce right, that a five percent cost of the bond for phases two, three, four, and five?
Well, you're also gonna have the maintenance bond in phases one and two.
Was it ten percent of cost of the road?
So why would the developer, Bruce, question for you, phase one's done. I got my five-year protection. If I can scrape up fifty thousand dollars a year, whatever it is, for the bond. Then at the end of the fifth year, can I let the bond go and be grandfathered forever? Or I still have to continue the bond? Until the project's done.
That's right.
And if it's twenty years, you gotta pay that bond for twenty years. What happens if you don't?
Then, then it expires, then it's done, then, then the approval goes away for everything from the roads, where you stopped building a road. From then on is one piece of, one lobby in.
And if you wanted to subdivide it, instead of two acre zoning, it's five acres.
I'm gonna ask Drescher all those questions. I just wrote down a big, long question for Drescher.
Well, something else to think about, you know, is. How many businesses, when, when we invest money, are we guaranteed there would only be a nice pathway five years from now? We're not. In this case, that's what we're trying to achieve, apparently, but, you know, I've been in business. Uh, I know many other businesses, and, and there is no guarantee, it's a free enterprise system.
No guarantee for developers to hear either.
No, well, there is, that's what you want is a guarantee.
No, it isn't.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
I'm guaranteeing a subdivision is still approved. I'm not guaranteeing he can sell a lot.
No, you're guaranteeing that if he doesn't sell a lot, he's.
I'm, I'm protecting his investment.
He doesn't have to, he doesn't have to, you know, if things went sour, they do go sour, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah.
What position you're in.
I can point to three subdivisions in town that went sour. There aren't subdivisions anymore.
But if, but the way Bruce described it, doesn't it make sense, Chuck? You put in phase one. You're protected for five years, provided that you do certain things, one of them is maintain a bond for the rest of the. So for the.
It's not just phase two, you made, it's the whole rest of them, to every single, every single business.
So it's fifty thousand bucks a year for a million dollar bond, that's what.
Yeah.
So I'm spending fifty thousand dollars and at the end of the fifth year. I finally get my permanent vesting. I haven't done anything else, I'm now permanently vested. But I can only keep that permanent vesting status. For so long as I continue to pay the fifty thousand dollars a year for that bond, or until the project is fully completed, all five phases.
And that's for a million dollars. If you've got a three-phase subdivision, where you've got a couple thousand feet of road in each one, you're not talking a million dollars, you're talking six or seven. So fifty times six, now you're talking three hundred thousand dollars a year. Someone's not gonna pay that and not have an intention to complete the thing, or not get it completed quickly. Because they're gonna, that's. Five lots a year they're giving away, just in paying the bond.
Well, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not really trying to tie the hands of the developer, I'm trying to protect the town.
No, no, but this, this. Put that, make him do that whole bond, not just the maintenance, you know, not just a reclamation bond or something, but the entire bond amount. Really puts some pressure on the developer to get it done. They're not gonna sit on that for five years and keep paying that and not do anything.
Well, if, if Frank likes that idea either.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Are you guys familiar with other, with what other towns have done in defining substantial completion?
They pretty much do what I just explained, they make you, once, once you get by the first phase, they'll, they'll do like where.
A, a lot of towns force you to bond it upfront, prior to approval.
For the whole thing?
For phase one.
And what about phase two, three and four?
Bond it when you build it.
No, 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 phase one is now over.
I haven't had a subdivision reboot for that, for that reason.
So there's no bond for two, three, four and five?
Not initially.
No, but once phase one is done.
Yes, you have to bond phase two to start building it. You have to bond, you have to bond anyways to build it.
But that's not what this says.
That's what we do, period.
This says you gotta bond the whole rest, not just phase two.
That's true.
This doesn't say that, we're talking about.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Well, it.
B, B two does.
That's right, that's what we're talking about, is B two.
But B two only applies for the first, uh, to get your five-year vesting.
Yes.
It doesn't talk about substantial completion, let's see, what does it say?
Yeah, B two is substantial. Maintaining the bond for the rest of it.
Yes, 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 you're right, you're right, B two.
For fully complete improvements.
No, it's not, this is, yeah, B two, I was thinking of two B.
Yeah, same, I've never had that situation.
Where our subdivision, where our subdivision is at what's left.
Would you, uh, be interested in developing a five-phase subdivision?
B two was nothing to you.
Pretty, uh, let's say, seven million, eight million dollar. What would you do? Not go into it in the first place?
The market's gotta be great because you can't miss a beat.
And it's gotta, you gotta predict a great market for five years.
Right.
Longer. I just calculated from our phasing, if you do eighteen lots, you need, it's gonna take you three point six years, twenty-eight lots. Four point six years, forty, forty lots, five point seven years, fifty-four lots, six point seven years. So a really large subdivision's gonna take you more than five years to build.
Yeah, and carrying that bond is.
Well, it's not just carrying the bond, if you can't complete it.
Right.
Right, then not only have you lost your bond money, but you've lost your, 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 um, your exemption. You're now subject to voting zoning changes.
And, and, and don't forget that this subdivision approval costs a lot of money.
Peanuts don't care to the cost of the project.
Well, I think the other thing that, you know.
Hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand.
I was always told, depends on the project. I was always told with the developer, the land's gonna be a third, legal, engineering, so forth, is gonna be a third. And the construction's gonna be a third of your cost, roughly.
You mean one-third of the cost of the development is in political regulation?
Yep. Well, Cold Springs, the application fee for that little, all race train thing was eight, it was twenty-eight hundred bucks. Sounds like peanuts, but the application. Has nothing to do with any work.
Well, raise those questions for Drescher, let's get some answers, I think we're finished with this.
Cause my question is, Bill, what happens if phase, if phase one is built eighteen months after approval, therefore, active and substantial is okay. Then he starts phase two, base core of pavements in the year four, then bonds the road. Year seven, he quits paying in the bond. What happens?
And if the answer is he loses his exemption, then. We can go ahead with, with Drescher's, Drescher's language.
Well, the next question is if he loses his vesting.
What happens with the second road that's built?
What happens to the second road that's not quite?
Finished yet.
Not quite done yet, right.
And you change the road regularly. I still don't think the two really says what Bruce is saying.
I think it does, and I think we can make it say that.
You can make it say that, I don't think it says.
Including, but not limited to the maintenance of adequate security to fully complete the improvements.
Improvements of what though?
The roads, the stone, the stone, the stone drainage, I mean, everything to do with the road, everything that needs to be done to build a road.
It doesn't say.
The improvements.
Well, I would say maybe the improvements over the next phase.
Improvements is the guardrail, it's the cisterns, it's.
Fully, in my mind, fully is the entire subdivision, fully complete.
You would wanna spell it out.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, I don't know if I'd want to, we might forget.
That's what I was thinking.
We might forget something.
No, you can do including but not limited to.
That's true. Including, including guardrails, cisterns, sidewalks, all nine yards.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move adjourn.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor?